Are you ready, David? You bet. Are you ready, Jackie? All right. Good morning, Adam out there in IT land. We are starting our third day of our budget session. And so it appears, thank you, David. Josie, we have you up first here with the fair board. The floor is yours, Josie. How we've been doing it? I don't know if you've been listening or not, but any deviations from the previous year's budget? We would just have you talk about, and then you don't have to go line by line unless you would like to go line by line.
I do not need to go line by line. I have some numbers that I can provide you with. But then past that, I do have a 1% kind of option that we're looking at and provide you with the benefits and that type of thing on that. So first of all, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us this opportunity. I know that a lot of other counties don't get this opportunity, and so this is really great for us. And just some numbers from our statement of operations in the past year. As of May 31st, we have increased, yeah, increased income by 98%, or no, by 2%. So we still have two months left in the fiscal year, so I expect us to be 100% if not more in our overall income. With that being said, we have decreased expenses by 25% from the previous year, which I think is honestly phenomenal. And then with that also, our net income has increased by over $16,000.
That's not bad when you consider COVID came through.
Right, exactly.
If you can match revenue from before, that's amazing.
Yeah, with COVID and the building not being rented as often, we've relied heavily on our camper spaces, which have been about 50% all season, which is great. And then we'll head into our fair season and Jubilee Days, and I only expect that to grow. Next thing on my little outline here that I threw together. We, I won't go into full details. I did have budgets printed for you all, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure how that all worked. And so our expenses haven't really changed. We've decreased some expenditures, just are, or not decreased some expenditures, but rather increased some expenditures as far as for our fair specific budget. Just because me and the board feel like fair should be an opportunity for all kids and not be financially bearing on any of them. And so the only fair cost that we have inflicted on our kids this year is for their families, for their camper spot. Other than that, we've got rid of stall fees as well as the carcass contest fees. And so those will be obtained through our central fair budget. Our, where did I? Our income budget, I've increased most every category by 2%, being very hopeful that we keep things moving with building rentals and RV storage. We were about 80% full this year. And not from a lack of interest, but rather a lack of good process in getting everybody in. And by the time we realized that we were only 80% full, we were nearing January. And by that point, it's not necessarily worth it to people to store for just four months. We also do have a new source of revenue, which is we purchased an event tent. And so that'll go on our fee schedule as soon as we get that event tent. We're hoping the end of the month, and so we'll can start renting that through the summer and into years to come. Our 1% that we have been looking at is a LED lighting upgrade. ROI energy came from us with a proposal to update every light on the facility with an LED fixture or an LED bulb. And so with that, our annual savings, we're always looking to cut costs. And so our annual savings with that upgrade would be upwards of $15,000. And that'd be paid back, or it'd be paid, it would pay for itself in 3.66 years, which I also think is phenomenal for something to pay itself back in that short amount of time. I guess that's a basic general overview of what we're kind of looking at doing with this year's budget. Is there any questions?
That's a pretty fast payback.
Yeah.
It's because of those big hot outside halogen lights.
Yeah. Yep, it's the big lights in the parking lot, the grandstands area, and then the big, the big cost is the lights in the beef barn. Those take up a lot of energy and you essentially have to replace the whole fixture when they do burn out, rather than just replacing an LED bulb when, when they do. When the LED does go out. The guy that gave us our proposal, he also mentioned that this, these lights would have a 10 to 15 year lifespan, which also is going to cut down on our labor costs because our guys won't be having to replace lights every couple of years. So looking at it from all different perspectives, I think it would be a great investment for the fairgrounds. That would save us a lot of money.
It's a super idea, and I think didn't Rob do something at the shop? And there was some sort of grant available. And is that, have you gone through that grant issue?
We haven't gone through the grant issue since this is still in the proposal phases to the board. They, they just got the proposal last month. And so this was a very last minute 1% request that we hadn't really thought about. But since the, the upfront cost is $53,000, they do have a financing program that we could look into, but I haven't looked into grants for this specific project.
Yeah, I think there is brand money available when you bring back, bring down the costs to you and the county, and then the payback would be great quickly. I don't know if it's a cost, if it's a 50/50 match or what it is, but I think it's a great idea.
I think it's about that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if it's to the state or the federal government, but I'm pretty sure it's still available. And if it's not, it will be with the Biden administration wanting to move towards that.
Well, the Rocky Mountain power knows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you made a call to Rocky Mountain Power, they could probably get you started down that path, Josie.
Yeah.
Josie, also, with the stall and pen rental fees and that for some of the families? Were they keeping some of the families from being able to?
No, they, they weren't necessarily keeping some of the families from participating. They were keeping maybe families from participating as much. So like, our carcass contest was a $10 entry fee, and some people just didn't see the value in that to even enter that contest because there is technically only one winner for that that does go through our sale earlier. So this being a free contest now, we will have an increase of participation in that contest. So that'll be great.
And Josie, that stall rental is like $39,000 a year, if I'm reading that right. You're, you feel pretty comfortable that you can make that up somewhere else?
Yeah, so the stall rental and our fair stall rental are in different categories. So our fair rental would have been in, or the stall rentals for fair would have been in the fair income, where this is our range arena as well as our pens. And that line item is our pens and stalls at the rodeo grounds. And so, yeah, I do feel fairly, very confident that that will be an accurate number just because of the amount of, we're always full at the range arena. We're one of the lowest boarding costs in the county. And so people, people always want to be there. And so right now I have two stalls open, but I have no doubt that at the end of the month, they'll be full.
What is that, what is that stall rental amount for the fair out of this amount? Is this the total amount I'm looking at that's combined?
No, so that it would have been the fair income would have been for the stalls at fair. And that would have been in the, in the fair income aisle, our category, which we're looking about five to, or $500 to $1,000 install fees for just the fair specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you're, you guys in the board, you guys haven't even gotten near. You know, I guess all of the revenue potential.
Yeah. Yeah.
Still bit on the revenue side, this is it's pretty considerable.
Any other questions? Jackie or Tracy?
Yes, Josie.
Okay. Yeah.
Direct you to some information about the grant. And she, because we've done it for other counties, she has a lot of that data.
Yeah. Perfect.
So it looks like we did it in the past for the fairgrounds in 19. But I don't know if that's.
It's called something else. I can't remember what it's called.
Relighting in the, in the shop out there. Under that.
He can, maybe it would shorten the process for how to drive the lead. Was it called Wiley?
W Y. And we did, so we, and now that you have mentioned that, we did have that specific grant for our shop. And so the shop is already LED lit, which is phenomenal. So we're cutting costs there. So, yeah, I, now that you mentioned what the specific grant is called, I'm like, oh, yeah, we did have that grant when I first started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's any other questions. Josie, thank you so very much. I appreciate.
Thank you, guys.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Fairground, excuse me. Tracy and Jackie, do you know if all the back payments have been made for the previous executive director or director, remember we had, hadn't been paying?
Retirement.
Retirement and all that stuff. Is that all, is that all been taken care of, Josie?
Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah.
As I know.
Okay, okay. All right. We'll see you, Josie.
Rachel's fun. Yeah.
I didn't ask you before I left, but then, yes, like, I gotta go.
Yeah.
The library board is scheduled in March. Rachel did requests about 45 minutes. Be able to take after the reserve also. And Mary Lee's would ask if she could come and talk with the board's voice here at 9:45 before we go into discussing the other.
Yeah. And Sue and Eber, however you guys would like me to handle the downtown clinic under the community partners. We can make it last, we can make it first, but either way, I'm going to leave the room for that discussion. And that way you guys do what you're going to do. And then somebody can come get me. I'll be laying down somewhere out of the heat.
Well, let's see. I don't see any reason why you shouldn't present the, you know, the 1% requests. You just can't vote on them, right?
Right, well, I don't want to be here to sway your opinion if that's going to be that. So it's just kind of the.
You need to present as everybody else is.
Sure, everybody advocates for their organization.
They're going for a city. So nobody's gonna, yeah, nobody's gonna present here today. We're just gonna decide.
Okay.
That happens at the, yeah, when we get to the 1% stuff later.
Yeah. So how about I put it last, and then I'll just step out, go to lunch early, and then you guys can just evert out in here.
Yeah. So basically, we're gonna, oh, you're saying we would put it at the end of.
The 1% community partnership, so it doesn't prejudice any other idea.
Well, and maybe we can weave in the, you know, the CARES Act stuff and the building reserve. ARP, American Rescue Plan stuff, and do that at the very, very.
Yeah, I'm gonna come back in, yeah, I'm not gonna go to lunch, but.
Speaking of American Rescue Plan.
Yeah.
They, we are scheduled for a payment of $3,775,992. I got the email this morning that everything is approved and determined to be complete and accurate.
Okay, and so then that's one of two payments, right, in that amount? Yeah. Does that have a timeframe when that has to be spent by?
It has to be obligated by December 31st of 2024.
Oh, okay, for 2024, okay.
I like happy emails like that in my inbox.
Right, that's a nice one. That's a nice one to get. What's interesting about that funding is, you know, when you think of all the things that we're involved in as far as purpose-specific funding, that CARES money is actually broader than most. If that makes any sense, when you think about you know, general fund money is not restricted. It's only, the choices are made by us, period. You know, with the help of our department, it's elected officials. The CARES money, as far as it's just the least restricted of all, I mean, so to me, I don't see us having any budget problems this year. How we sort it out is another thing, but the only thing I get concerned about is if we fulfill too many budget requests if we're not careful, you know, we would obligate. Some of that stuff can't be reeled back. You started, and it's there.
Right.
So so that's my concern. And I also worry about inflation.
Right.
You know, when the government's printing money like they are. If you're.
Good, you're in the right spot.
If your wages buy less and less, then you're going backwards.
Right, right, yeah.
Then we don't know what's gonna happen, but maybe it'll be okay for you. Maybe it'll take you here for that.
My son is probably gonna need to say that.
Oh, cool. Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, here's a blast from the past. I was talking to Matt Munfris.
Oh, yeah. I know that.
So he's a grandpa and then a stepdad, kind of in the same age category. It's not too far apart. Well, it's either gonna make him old fast or keep him young. Right. The duality of these things. That's cool.
Tracy, Owen and I went out this morning early and we read it to a couple of German Shepherds for Gronk.
Yeah.
And Owen thought that they were in the wrong spot. They corrected him, but nicely. Like, you got some guts, kid, right? I don't even want to do that at my size.
You know what's funny is Owen's dad, Gus, he's a mini Aussie. And so he's got short dogs in him. So anytime Wiley or Great Heronese is around, he's always like barking at him. Wiley, you don't do that. Wiley, this, Wiley, that. And Wiley is like, I'm gonna put a paw on you, I'm flattening you. He might have inherited some short dog syndrome.
Well, I think he just really wanted somebody else to play with. And they didn't seem to be the playing boots so much.
They're all about their work.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Oh, good.
Nice.
Well, Rachel, whenever you're ready, the floor is yours. Rachel, what we've been doing too, I don't know if you, is not going line by line. But if there are any variations in a line, just go to that and explain that, and we'll ask questions at the end. Just go to that and explain that and and we'll ask questions at the end.
Okay.
All right, um, and if it's all right with you guys too, I did think, um, and I can skip this first one, I did think I would kind of. Kind of highlight kind of the year and what it's looked like at the library, if that's okay, I should take a few minutes to. Give you guys the update since we don't get to talk very often. Um, so, yeah, thank you commissioners, um, this is always great, I did, as you know, travel with my address, so I thought I'd. Introduce you here, um, so Jessica and Kay from the library board are here. Um, and then Cassandra Hunter, who is our new assistant director, um. And then Lizzie is one of our library assistants, and she's also getting her master's in public administration. So I invited her to come along and kind of see how this part works for us and for the community. Um, so, yeah, so like I said, I would thought I'd just touch base a little bit on. Kind of what the pandemic year has looked like for the library, and then as noted, I'll kind of touch on any variations, and then we did have some extra one percent. Optional requests this year, so I was gonna go into more detail about what those were and why we were making those requests. Um, I guess, I mean, the start is. I'm just so amazingly proud of our library team, um, they've done a really, really, really incredible job this year. Um, somehow, in the midst of a pandemic, I think we've ended up, I don't think, I know, we've ended up at a much better place as an organization than we were a year ago. Um, and that's a pretty profound thing to happen in such a crazy year. Um, so part of that included, so we actually shift our shifted our service models, I counted. Approximately five times over this year, so that included just being in the meeting room for grab and go. That included right at the beginning of the year, we tried to do some grab and go and be open. Um, when we had the uptick in November, we went to an all reservation system. And we've kind of morphed our way back to full hours, um, which is pretty incredible. Our number of holds, so when people request books ahead of time, actually doubled this year, um, and that also took a lot more work for our staff. Um, so this year, instead of just pulling a book from the shelf, they actually pulled it, checked it out, made it available to our patrons, that was how we were able to make. Our books available, um, all week, even if we were, our building wasn't open. Um, so they actually did that with over eleven thousand items, which is pretty impressive this year. Um, just so in terms of circulation and things, that's what it's touched base on, so we checked out about a hundred thousand items. Um, we're either checked out renewed, which is down about thirty percent, um, from the previous year. But obviously, it was such a wild year, um, and even this last month that we've been open full hours, we are seeing. We're seeing those circulation numbers jump, so we jumped to where we beat where we were in FY nineteen. And so I think we'll be back on track by the end of next year to be caught, to be caught up with where we were. Um, I think we'll rebound pretty nicely, um, our e-checkouts have, um, stayed steady, actually. So we checked out about forty-six thousand items electronically, but what's really cool is. Last fiscal year, we saw about sixteen hundred users, this fiscal year, we saw about twenty-six hundred users. So we're taking about the same amount of materials, but we're reaching a lot more people, which is really cool, so that means we definitely pulled more people in in that. And then, um, our team just did a great job at figuring out how to keep programming and outreach going. Um, so they continued to figure out how to let small groups of community members have connections through book clubs, virtually. Um, socially distanced, they made over two hundred and seventy-five unique, like, kit sets and distributed those to over fourteen hundred people in our community. Um, we still were able to pull up the League of Women Voter Forums, um. We obviously still continue to serve as an outreach for computers and internet access. Um, and we're able to continue our outreach and home delivery, so once sort of the spike for COVID did settle down. Um, while our librarians were no longer able to interact as much with those patrons. We did continue to deliver to nursing homes, hometown patrons, we were able to make those deliveries for them. Um, and I think what has happened for us is that this has actually been a really amazing opportunity for us to kind of. Shift the way that we see the library, shift our focus for what we want to do going forward. Um, I think one of that is just really understanding the value of our space, the most heartbreaking part was when we had to close our doors. Um, and obviously, we had to, that wasn't a question, um, but understanding the the value of our space, getting, seeing people come back now. And letting us know how much they missed us is really nice, but for us, I think that has come back to really valuing. Our our library space and just what that means as a place within our community. Um, so one of the things that we've done is changed, we, as you guys know, we've changed our hours, so that's actually increased our. Um, total number of hours, we are open three more hours each week, we're open eight more weekend hours each week. Um, which has been really great. Um, we're also kind of shifting our priorities, so we are really putting a central focus on having all of our staff serve those service points. Be there for our patrons in person, um, as kind of our top priority and then kind of building things around that. Um, obviously, too, I think that fun switch too, which with the book mobile and that stuff, it's also focusing on. The value of our space, but then the value of reaching beyond our space, and so we're super excited about the bookmobile. Um, that is gonna add, so additions, so we're already adding additional service hours, and then in the fall, as we get back going. We'll be adding probably ten to fifteen more, at least ten to fifteen more service hours and various points in the community. And so I feel like we have this nice balance of really improving our internal space, but also improving our outreach as well. Um, and then, as you know, so we actually had planned on doing the long-term process, long-term planning process last year, that didn't happen for obvious reasons. So we're gonna do that this year, um, and super excited about that to kind of refocus where we wanna go, again, kind of looking at our internal space and how we do outreach. Um, and then we also do, so all of our spent money, all that, um, six penny tax money, we had set aside for improving our internal space. So that's gonna be one of our focuses this coming year, is actually using that spent money, um, to do a lot of those improvements to make. Our internal space more efficient, but also just more comfortable and welcoming. Um, so, yeah, like I said, I think we've kind of, we've settled down and we're feeling pretty good, we're feeling really great about. Um, where things are, um, and I just, well, I go again, we have an amazing staff, we have an amazing board, so thank you guys for appointing an amazing board. Um, everyone has been just so amazingly supportive, um, in this year. Um, and I'm kind of excited, we've done all of this in a pandemic year, so I'm really excited to see what we deal. In a less chaotic year, um, I'm pretty excited about that, so.
You're closed on Wednesdays now, right?
Yes.
Has that been an issue for the public?
It hasn't, you know what, nobody has raised questions, I think when we immediately. Whenever I get kind of a funny look about being open Wednesdays or being closed on Wednesdays, I say. Yes, but we're open Saturday and Sunday from ten to six, and then everybody is is happy and moves on, so, yeah, it hasn't so far been. We haven't gotten any questions, um, to the best of my knowledge about that, so, yeah, that's gone pretty well. Any other questions? Um, budget, okay, so let me jump into a couple of things, um. On variation, so Millevy, I'll just note that we did just assume a three point five percent increase, obviously, if. Millevy is higher than that, which I'm guessing gets higher than that, we don't know yet, um. Then we'll adjust to that, so I just wanted to let you know, I mean, the plan right now is if Millevy were to come higher than that, we would. Probably would redirect that money towards personnel, um, it would be the plan there, um. Partly because we're just at a place where we have a lot of stuff with really great ideas, we just don't necessarily have the time to implement them. And so putting that in, we also have a lot of staff that are under forty hours, so the plan would be to just push more of our staff up. Put, start, can, continue to pull them up to forty hours, so just as a heads up, that that's kind of our plan, if that Millevy comes in higher, um. We do have the higher one percent asks, and I thought I would also swing around to the specifics of those when we get to the end, um. Operating cash, I did do a lower estimate this year just because we aren't quite certain where that's gonna come in. I am hopeful, we hired a meeting room person, we're gonna really work on pushing our meeting rooms as a way to generate revenue. Um, so I'm hoping we'll be able to get back to that eighteen fifty, but I, eighteen five hundred, but I was a little conservative, just not knowing. How quickly we were gonna get back into that space. Um. The. Oh, and I apologize that I see that, uh, under friends, I actually left that empty, and that should not have been a zero for FY twenty-one. Um, that should have been forty-five thousand, um, my apologies for that mistake. Um, so we do have a major decrease, again, with the friends, they are just very uncertain about how they're gonna be able to do their book sales. Um, and so we did a really conservative estimate again, um, this twenty-three thousand is based on what they know that they can sell via Amazon and on our book app. Um, so there's a chance that that will come in higher, but, um, that was, that was the reason for that sort of significant increase. Um, and then the increase in the additional grant funding is is the record and they're funding for the bookmobile. Any questions on the revenue side of things?
Rachel, I don't see friends, is that under grant funded?
It is actually under, it's on li, it's line twenty-two.
Okay.
So there's beginning grant question, then there's ACPL foundation, and then the Friends of the Library.
Which procedure are you looking? Oh, okay, gotcha, alright, different page.
I, I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chase is like, I know that one, that's the one I like.
And what did you say that friends should be instead of zero?
Under FY twenty-one, that should have been forty-five thousand.
So friends is basically cutting it in half because they're uncertain about.
Yep. Yep. Um, cool, yeah, any other questions on revenue?
Are you, with some of the remodeling that you're thinking about, will your. Space be out of commission for a while, or be, or you're gonna try to work around it?
Yeah, we're gonna, so, and most of it won't be any, I mean, most of it's like a furniture and kind of moving stuff. Um, it may be out of commission, if it were out of commission, it would be towards, I think it would be like next spring, that would be out of commission for a little bit. Um, and that, I mean, in terms of the wider building, and so the the plan then would actually be that we would just. Park our bookmobile in the parking lot, so we could provide some some level of service. Uh, which would be the kind of the point of trying to do it towards a nice weather time, so it was just easier to use our outdoor space. Our meeting room will be out of commission, um, for a little bit of time to be able to do the updates there. But again, I think we are hopeful that we can do that with as minimal disruption as possible and kind of just plan it around events, so. I'm hoping it wouldn't take us out for more than a couple of weeks, um, and then we'd be really ready to kind of fill that space back up. Um, but we thought, we thought, and hopefully that one will happen, this, that part will happen this fall, um, we did feel like because. There's still some uncertainty about what fall programming will look like, there's still some uncertainty about. What, you know, we don't know if there's gonna be a fall uptick, you know, all of those things, that actually felt like a good year to go ahead and just get these things done. Um, looking that our building might be out of commission anyway, we might have to restrict use of the meeting room anyway, and so. Planning ahead this time so that we can actually make use of that downtime if that happens.
Well, I'm super excited about the idea of having the the disco ball come down from the ceiling instead of, yeah, just being there.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, I will really, I will definitely make sure that that is on our list, Riley will will get that covered. Um, I think absolutely, I mean, some black lights, like, you should.
I'm sorry, I'll let you in, probably behind the curtain with me and, you know.
I mean, gosh, Pete, all right, well, I mean, it's now, it's on the list now, so. Well, we'll make sure to make it, you know, party central. Absolutely, I mean, why not, why not, I mean, on a, on a, so that right now, we're just happy that our lights, um, we reoriented the ori. The direction of our meeting room lights, so they actually go from, instead of going from side to side, they go from front to back, and we were thrilled. By such a small, small thing, but, you know, so the disco ball is a lot for us, Pete. Um, all right.
All right.
Expenses, um, again, nothing much to say about Millevy. Um, we'll note, health insurance costs actually went down a little bit. We switched our brokers, so we, instead of going basically directly through group, group cross, group shell. Um, we did join the Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust, which is who the school district uses as well. Um, that has actually decreased our costs, but improved our benefits, so that is amazing. Um, so that's a really nice shift, um, and also, I mean, while they're not here, just for you guys to know, a big shout out to. Um, Jennifer and Christina, um, they were really, we ha, ended up needing to do a last minute scramble, and they were just huge and helping in that process. So I wanted to make sure to give them a shout out and helping, helping us make that happen, um. So that's the change in that, um. I did wanna know, um, so professional development, you'll see, this isn't something that we'd have the county per, the county pay for before. Previously, this had been paid for by the foundation, um, this year, I just kind of, it's with more, this is mostly not really an increase of. Um, it was two things, it is actually slight increase of cost, and it's also just a moving of money and who's paying for what. Um, the reason that I moved this out of having the foundation pay for it is that, um. We need to use their money every single year, like, we don't, we can't roll foundation money between fiscal years. Um, and we have a little bit more flexibility sometimes to do that with those county funds. Um, and just because there are years where actually a lot of our standard conferences happen every other year. And so this was a way for us to kind of set aside that money, if we don't use it, to be able to hold, hold on to send. Um, staff to to conferences and things, um, it is also a slight increase in in funding. Um, part of this was because the board set, um, in our last round of negotiations for, um, my contract. Um, they did set aside professionals development money specifically for the director, so that is now factored in. Um, and we also did some more, setting aside more money for professional, um. Uh, just professional memberships, which we actually hadn't done before, staff were paying for their own professional memberships, and we thought that was something that. Um, we should pick up, so those are the changes there, um, and part of that comes from our board chair, um, Scott Shee always likes to say that with high expectations. Comes high support, and so that's kind of where, that's where this line is coming from. Um, the increase, let's see, if we move down to, um, IT systems, um. So you're gonna see the biggest jump there, um, is gonna be the IT subscription fees and purchases, these are, um. All the one percent asks, um, then again, if you'll, I'll, I figured I would kind of go over those at the end, but, um, in detail. Um, but that's gonna, that's including our bamboo HR, um, and some tech upgrades, so that's why that expense has jumped. Um, most of those are gonna be one-time, one-time increases, and then we'll go back to our normal rate. Um, if we move down to line twenty-four, long-term planning, I just wanted to note. This is just money that actually was from last fiscal year, that we had set aside to do long-term planning, it didn't happen, so we're just rolling that straight over. So that actually equals, on the revenue side, there's the beginning library cash, and you'll see that those amounts equal, because we're, we're just moving that over. Um, and then. This is not a change, but I am just gonna shout out that, um, doing the HR services contract has been life-changing for us. And we, I think we're all on board on having Christina's help there has made a world of difference. And then. And then the only, I think, again, and then if you look down under grant funded, again, so you'll see some changes in like collections, books. That again is just like a shifting of money, that's not actually an increase. Um, and then the only other thing is if you go all the way down to line forty-one, um, I feel like. That increase is probably self-explanatory, so we grouped all of any bookmobile and programming money. This year, we just grouped our bookmobile and everything we're spending on it, so all of the startup costs for books. All of the events that we're gonna do, we just grouped that into one line because it's so unknown. Next year, we will probably spread it out into its appropriate categories, but this year, it just made sense to kind of lump that into, into one line. Um. And I think, and then the other, I guess the other final thing to them, no, um, line forty-seven. Is we have had a really big uptick in our payroll reserve, um, this is largely because we kept some positions empty. This year, um, a lot of those were our frontline positions, that once we weren't open full hours, we just didn't have the need to fill them, they. They were emptied by attrition, and so we just kept them empty, um, for a little while, and now we're back to being fully funded, so that's where, that's why. There's such a big uptick there, um, our plan for that money is, um, Christina and I are gonna work on a salary survey this fall. Um, so we wanna be able to have. Um, that source of funding in case, um, we do need to make some adjustments. Um, we'll be able to use that, and then we are still holding on to it as a rainy day fund, knowing that we still don't quite know what Wyoming's economy is gonna do. And how this is all gonna trickle out in the end, and so for a little while, want to make sure that we're holding on to a pretty, pretty decent nest egg that could. That could buffer us for quite a while, if we needed to, if if things were not as pretty, that we would have buffer to keep staff on for a while, if things turn bad. Um, so that is on like expenditures, um. The only other thing I thought I would do is then go into more detail on our one percent asks for you guys. The only other thing I thought I would do is then go into more detail on our one percent asks for you guys and what those, those include. So we put in four request, separate requests for one percent optional funds. The first one is our normal request, which is IT services. So, oh gosh, this is like, this is the moment where you see all your typos in front of people. So we are requesting, the first amount at the top is correct and not in the narrative. Um, we are requesting twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, this is for our contract with Tag Technologies to keep all of our technology up and running. Um, we have increased our amount of technology, so we did slightly increase that amount this year. But that's just kind, that's our normal ask. Our second request was for eight thousand dollars to cover a three-year prepayment of bamboo HR. So typically, we've just folded this in on an annual basis, but we do get a ten percent discount if we just do the full, um, eight thousand, over the full three-year. Bamboo has been working great for us. We've actually been able to add payroll services with Christina's help. Um, and we actually have been also been able to integrate some scheduling software that integrates very nicely with bamboo HR. So we're pretty committed to to sticking with this. It's a great system. So we're requesting, so this is a sort of one-time ask. And every three, it might become an every three-year ask so that we could get that that discount. So we didn't quite have the room in our normal budget to do that full three-year prepayment, but that would kind of help us save some money in the long run. Then our third extra ask this year was for ten thousand dollars to help us upgrade staff, staff and public computers. So as I outlined in that narrative, we did have we need to do, we need a major fix actually to our public library computer system, which we think would take us about fifty thousand dollars just to fix that alone. If we just, if we fixed our thing client system. So rather than investing in just half of our technology, um, our idea is actually to buy new staff computers and then rotate our current staff computers, which are very operable, out into the public area. So the idea, this would again be a one-time ask. We think this will be about a forty-five thousand dollar project. Um, we have ten thousand dollars from this fiscal year that we're putting in. We have ten thousand dollars of our regular funding that we get for the upcoming year that we are putting in from the library budget. And then we're requesting the additional ten thousand dollars of assistance from one percent optional, which leaves an additional fifteen thousand. That's a little TBD there, um, which either would, depending on how our board goes, either we would wait to finish that, the end tail end of that project in a future fiscal year. Or actually, the state library, um, with their, with their ARPA funding is reducing our wild consortium bill, which is online. It's here. I know it's here. Maybe it's not. I bet I folded it into something. I believe I have it under IT systems on line eleven. Is where, where we fold that in. So that's a fifteen thousand dollar bill that they are actually just gonna pick up for us this year. So that's a little TBD that will be up to our board of how they wanna, um, what they wanna do with that, but that's the other possible source for that funds. So yeah, so we're kind of just trying to piece, piece this project together through multiple funding sources, uh, both through our regular disbursements, um, and the levy from the county, as well as this additional request from you guys. And then the final request I put in here was actually to help us finish out the materials purchases for the bookmobile. So as you know, um, so the record board came in to cover the price of the bookmobile. Some of the IT and upgrades and a little bit of materials. The city came in with fourteen thousand dollars that will help with some of the materials purchases, our marketing and events. So it leaves us at the end about a short, and then the foundation came in to pay for the wrap directly. So it leaves us about fifteen thousand dollars short for our startup costs for the materials. We will not budget about thirty thousand dollars. We will not need thirty thousand dollars every year. We just need it in the first year to fill it, and then we'll just slowly rotate things through. So this was an extra ask that, um, I wanted to put in there. As I noted in the narrative, I think those other three are really key to our operations and harder for us to fundraise for. This is one where, certainly if we need to, we can fundraise for, but I also wanted to just bring it to the commission as an opportunity, um, for the county to directly put in some funds into the bookmobile project. As well as, yeah, to just, you know, to make the ask. So that is that final, the final ask for the bookmobile is just to help with that ten thousand. And then the remaining five thousand dollars between the Friends and the Foundation and the library, we will, certainly we bought, definitely fundraised for that. That is it from me. Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I have a question or a couple. How do you feel about, so I'll, I'll name them all and you can address them in any order you want. Have you been able to access some care's funding? For some things, that's one question. Is there, do you feel like you're getting what you need in this budget, or does it? Cause I think that a couple of budgets before have been more difficult than this one. Like maybe there's. So I'm curious if there's anything you're particularly excited about in this budget. Or satisfied with, and anything you're unsatisfied, you know, like something that you wish you could do, but you can't.
Yeah. Um, so care's funding. Actually, we have, I mean, we've done, we, we just went in with the county on, um, on was it the request that one, did one go through? I don't remember, like this business. When the, some of the big supplies orders early on that the county did, um, Bailey just put us in there with that. So yeah, we did get, I think, we, I cannot remember the number off of top of my head, but thousand, thousands of dollars worth of supplies. From that, and we were also able to access, um, United Way early on. We were able to, that's not care's money, but we were able to, um, get some additional sort of COVID-specific relief. And then through the state library too, there's been some indirect things. So there's just been some wider, wider resources they've been able to purchase, um, for us to use. And then, like I said, so now I guess the second act, um, the American rescue, thank you, rescue plan, um, that is where, so the, um, state library is. So money was allocated in that larger, in the federal grant, money was allocated to libraries, which actually goes through a federal institute to state libraries, and state libraries decide how to distribute it out. So that's where our state library has decided, um, they have some statewide resources that they're purchasing that will do some programming around, like Yale Business Forum, some entrepreneurship type stuff. Um, and then for us directly, that is where they're completely waiving our wild bill. So we will be getting a reimbursement check for this year. They will be completely, um, they will be invoicing us for zero dollars next year. And then they will significantly be reducing our, our bill. So that, that's that money that we pay to be a part of the Wyoming Consortium and have them do all of our IT support on our catalog and systems. Um, and that runs about fifteen thousand dollars a year. So, um, we've been able to do that as well. And then there were some other things. And then I guess indirectly, the Friends actually were able to, they came, they came in at what they expected to this year because they were able, both the Friends and the Foundation were able to get, um, money from, I can't remember names anymore. The funds that came out last fall where they would pay for the difference in revenue, which nonprofits can also do. So both the foundation and the Friends were able to request fun, funding. So the Friends were able to, so they came up to what they had budgeted last year. So they had, they got a grant for, I think, about eighteen thousand dollars, which covered the gap of not having, being able to have any book sales. So that was actually a huge relief, because I didn't know how we were gonna cut our materials budget by twenty thousand, and we didn't have to. So some of that came to us and some of that came indirectly. In terms of, do we have, do we have what we need? Yeah, I actually feel really, I feel really good about this budget. I mean, of course, on a, on a really basic level, I think we're still, we're, we're really settling down and grouping. I mean, I know on the horizon, I, you know, some things that we're gonna need and, and need the funding for, some that we'll find from our budget. Some that we might need to go seek for, like on a really practical level. Realized yesterday that one of our cottonwoods is dead, just did like not leafing out, and I was like, oh, we gotta take that out before it takes itself out. You know, cause it's gonna close, and it'll close that field if it, if it comes down on its own. So, um, you know, so some of like those practical things and taking out trees is not cheap. So like there's some, so there's like some practical things on the horizon that like have me going, you know, um, figuring out where we go. I think, as I said, like personnel, like we can always make use of more staff time. For me though, that's a I kind of approach that as we just hold on and be patient. That typically, the levy steadily goes up, that's most of our personnel, and we just kind of ride that and, and we grow. We grow slowly, and I think there's actually opportunities there. We're finally at a place actually where we've settled down enough that I think we can look at doing some grant-funded positions, which we haven't done in quite a while.
And Rachel, that part-time help that you have, most are wanting to move towards full-time?
We have quite a few that want to move for, to full-time, or that we have on our full-time status, which we count full-time as thirty hours. So we benefit people at thirty hours. And we have quite a few people who are at thirty or thirty-five hours that would happily go to forty. So yeah, not all of our part-time would want to, but I think we have, we have a few that would. And so, and I think that would, that could benefit, benefit us. Uh, in terms of coverage, in terms of just like, we're, we ebb and flow. We've had a time where a lot of our part-time positions were just, you know, a lot of like college students and people just like part-time jobs going through. I think we're actually moving more and more to where we're getting people who come in who actually wanna stay. And so when we have the people who wanna stay, I'm like, yeah, let's like figure out how we can incentivize you to stay. Because that's great for our internal, um, right, just that, yeah, it costs, it costs time and energy to do turnover. So, um, that, so yeah, I mean, um, I think in terms of what we want, I mean, there's always room and dreams for more. But at the same time, you know, we have worked for this year, our goal is to spend a lot of that spent money. So that we actually have that pool of money. So it really is just at this point about, a little bit about having the, the people and giving them the time to, to do and spend the money. It doesn't mean that in future years I won't have, like, I have some things on the horizon, but I think for this year, I'm actually, I'm, I feel really good about this budget. I feel really comfortable with where we're at. And this would, this would have us in a really, really solid place for next year.
And is the bus wrapped yet?
Not yet. So we are taking it down the eighteenth. We will pick it up on the twenty-fifth. And then we are still planning on doing our unveiling, um, likely on July eighth, early July. So we'll send out invitations and it should be a great fun time. And the, um, Jessica actually did the design for us, which she probably doesn't appreciate me pointing out, but it's beautiful. It's, it's beautiful and amazing. It matches, it matches our website, but it's gonna be amazing. It's gonna look great. So we're excited. So we will let you know. Um, and we will probably actually have it just parked outside, um, the library on Seventh Street for the summer. So everybody will get a drive-by and see it.
So Rachel, if you were to prioritize the one percent asks, I'm guessing the, the bookmobile would be not at the top three. How would you prioritize those one percent asks?
I would say I put IT services as number one. I would actually probably do the staff and computer upgrade as number two. And then I would do the bamboo HR as number three, because we could, again, just do a one-year or find that elsewhere, so.
Maybe you don't know, but if you do, um, have you ever explored IT services with the county? So I'm thinking twenty-four thousand. That might be part of another full-time position for us if we were to contract that out with you. I'm just talking for Adam, but I'm just wondering if that discussion has ever been had.
So it's actually, and that's how it used to be. So that's actually how it was right before we brought on TAG. We did have a position that we, I think the library actually paid for the full-time position. I'm looking at Jackie and Tracy, because I wasn't actually even here. And then, um, that person was split between, between us. Um, so that's how it used to be. And then IT had its moment here. I don't know all the stories. So with that, so when the county went to Medicine Bow, we took on TAG to do that. And I will say, the next thing with, um, now with Adam in position, Tim with Tag Technologies and Adam work great together, so they do partner on quite a lot of things. And certainly Adam has already helped us on things. Tim has helped Adam on things. So we do, do not sharing, and we do have conversations too of, as we make our IT decisions, kind of talking to Adam to make sure that we're not going so far afield of the county. That whether that would be a chance at some point to merge together or a chance for, um, just even for, it's like our IT person is gone, to have a setup where like, if we have a major emergency, Adam feels like he could come in and help as well. So, um, so yeah, I had, that is how it was in the past. And so we haven't, I mean, right now, it's, the current situation has worked pretty well. So I don't, we haven't really actively explored anything else, because it's working, but, yeah.
Yeah, super. And is TAG a local company? I'm not that familiar. They are. Awesome.
It's, it's Tim Gaddis.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, Tag Technologies is Tim Gaddis. One man show. Yeah, he's great, and he's been really helpful in helping us figure out some of the, some of, we were all, well, I think the county was also too. We are left in some weird IT positions, and so he's been useful in helping to, us get untangled from some of them. Yeah.
Any other questions? Anybody in the, in the entourage? Grab the mic and, and tell us anything? You came all this way, so you don't have to, but you're, you're here, so.
Yeah, I do have another question. The question that's always out there is, um, hours, right? Days and hours and the library being open. And what I think is so interesting about that is that there's a lot more ways to access a lot of the materials. You know, without actually going in there. So in a certain way, the services expand and some people don't understand that. Maybe because they don't want to use those things.
Yeah, I wonder, I said the state library has actually consolidated, so like in terms of like our eBooks and the audiobooks, we now only have one platform. Two are going three, so the one is nice, because it's just easier to market one. I think some of the things that we've kept, I mean, and some of the things we've talked actually is doing a lot more work about promoting and expanding our home delivery services, um, and making sure that people understand who is eligible for those. Um, and that a lot more people are, are eligible than they think. So one of the things we've talked about is like working with the hospital to make sure that new moms, especially in Laramie, in the fall, in our sp season, where you don't leave the house with your baby, um, to know, okay, we will bring, we will bring books to you, we'll bring board books to you, we will bring, you know, we will deliver, deliver things to you. So with the bookmobile with outreach, we are, that is one of those parts of trying to also help people understand that we will come to them, and a lot of people are eligible for those services. Um, that's an area that actually you'd really like to expand. Um, and so it is that balance, and hopefully the bookmobile will really help. I mean, it becomes a giant billboard driving around town. That, that people do understand all of the different ways that we can help them and win. Really, again, prioritizing, I think, part of it is getting the message out about using the library space and valuing that and what people can access outside of us. And then a part of it, I think, and a big shift is then now really prioritizing the people. There's a group of people who just aren't aware that like what we have to offer them would match what they want, you know? And so that's like basic, like, hey, you don't read books, that's fine, but we have DVDs and board games, like we have other things. I think, but a huge part of that is also just like, and this will be the bookmobile really prioritizing, like there are people who just don't have easy access to where we are. And so really, really focusing on making sure that we are finding ways to get to people who assume the library is not for them, largely because they can't get to us. And so really trying to fight that, which is as much a practical thing as like a messaging thing. So, um, yeah, I think, I think you're totally right, and I think that's an area that we really wanna work on, is finding those creative ways. It's always, that's always the hard part, right? Like, we have our core people, and they're gonna come to us no matter what. Um, but like figuring out how to get beyond that core and figuring out, um, and there's some people who are just not interested or don't want it, and that's fine. But I think there is a group beyond our core that would gladly make use of our services if they understood, um, what was available. And I think sometimes to be really frank, and this is true of any library in any community, like some of those people have encountered messages or experiences that have made them feel vulnerable. And so part of that is us, you know, going the extra mile to say, hey, like we really want to reach beyond just that, that inner core and find the community, people on the edges of our community that, um, will not choose us, but just don't know that work for them. So I think that's a big part of, of what we'll be doing in this next year.
Well, Rachel, I love the book mobile. Looks like Kate, um, would you, Jessica, thank you so much for being on the board and being volunteers. I think that's really important. And it's so nice to have the two of you be willing to step up and, and serve in that. So thanks. We can't do our work without you guys.
Sure. It's, it's such a joy to be on this board particularly, as the way we have worked together as the group that we've got to work with, the positive things that are happening at the library and watching what happened this last year and the way the library was able to continue with people and continue serving the community with, uh, particularly the graphic goals situation that they have with books and also with the, the children's program, with setting up the, um, reading stories that go around the block now. I don't know if any of you have seen those, but it's, it's, it's quite, you know, quite inventive and, and wonderful to be with. But these people that work here, that work at the library, they're wonderful. They, I, I rarely have heard such a group that are constantly thinking about what else can we do? How can we improve this? How can we keep things going and keep it positive and appropriate for our community? So pretty, pretty good group that we've got there. I'm glad you're such a supportive of us.
Thanks, Kay. I appreciate it.
And Kay, your term is up. Is that right? Your board term is up?
It might have. My board term is up.
But we're hoping you'll renew.
Yes.
I'm excited to see your application. Have you in particular turned, will end up being twenty years, the next twenty years? Is that okay?
Well, no, I'm not gonna be seventy-five here for the season, so.
We'll take you anyway.
Her, her biolog, she filled a term, so she actually had, so Kate paid, this is her first regular term, so Kate actually could renew for one term after the fourth. So we could do a whole eight and a half. I'm gonna put that up. So anyway, my.
And I don't really have that much to add, but I will say that as a board, we've been really trying to support the employees and make the, the environment there and the employees happier and working together. So that professional development, all of that is really important, I think, to make a better library. But they need a really great job overall. That's what I'd say.
Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, I have a question for you. What, what in specific are we going to have as far as programs this summer? Or will there be some of these offer talks?
So there, what were we doing this summer? This summer? So we are, we'll be there every Friday. Um, and it is, we've been kind of working on a Thursday, Tuesday, night, in fact, twenty-six years there with some community staff, but we will keep doing that on Thursday. We'll have day nineteen. And we'll be continuing with story walks. And we have some book club meetings like that. So what we, what we wanted was to have things that like, we could take the local distance or go to a virtual hall if we needed to. We didn't want to develop a lot of programming that was solely based on experience and then practice that was a stopper of the program. So that's what we did. Um, we're finally starting to plan what we're gonna do this fall as well. I do think we'd like to be able to go back to our in-person programming and having a short day at night. Um, so nice things like that, some of those standards that we've always done. We also cover summer meetings, um, that we do for children. And so if all they did is give them adults, we're fully declining with John Lab. We do scavenger plans, we do team app. Um, and then we are also, the fun thing I think about the summer meeting is that this year instead of getting private, we're gonna be using that money to donate to some of the local pop rescue young people. Okay, we'll have the opportunity to be, or so it's not profitable communication, it's important thing for these, um, groups. We're like, you know, we're trying to make sure what we have coming out this time. The reason for the dog rescues this year is theme is Tails and Fails. So it's about stories and, so that's the inner field.
And how about the question you have with the masks? Rachel, has that?
Um, yeah, I will say that we. Um, yeah, I, we have, we have, I guess loosened up a little bit. We kind of didn't till like, we are strongly recommending mask wearing, um, but we have stopped, um, getting into discussions with every person that walks in with that one. Um, so we will often offer one and then if they don't take it, we have decided that, um, it's just at this point, um, our staff are vaccinated. And so we know that we have that level of protection. We have our sneeze guards for when we're at the desk. Um, we did give, um, the staff have the room. So really the change there now is if, um, if we're doing like one-on-one help, um, we will often ask someone to wear a mask if we're doing, you know, clothes like theater help. Uh, but beyond that, we have decided that it just, it was getting really stressful and hard on our staff. And it just was, it was hard to continue to have those discussions. And so, yeah, we, so we just left it up. We are strongly recommending our staff are continuing to wear masks, um, but we're kind of, in terms of engagement with the public, especially once the CDC came out with their new announcement, it became a little bit harder to, to reinforce, you know, an absolute mask requirement.
So, so I think the CDC has been under, uh, under understood, right? So it's still masks in a public setting, whether you're vaccinated or not. Um, but that, that is neither here nor there. Be really interesting if we could, um, I'm gonna keep hitting this drum for as long as it takes. Um, because we have, you know, school starting in August for the university. Um, we also have a first football game, which will bring thousands of people to our community. And most of them will be, the way to bed is they won't be vaccinated. Um, and so be nice if we could work with you also to get the word out and, and move our vaccination rate in this county, um, to something other than forty percent. That's just not ideal. And, uh, so thank you for being willing and being part of it. And we'll get some stuff to you. I think there's gonna be a movement to try to set a goal, um, for our community and see if we can get closer to fifty, sixty, seventy percent. You know, Vermont has eighty percent, um, and they're a time and a half the number of people that we have. And so Vermont can do it. I'm sure we can do it. So.
No, I mean, we'll be totally happy, whether it's a patient, whether at some point, you know, when a, somebody wants to attempt to run something out of our meeting room and run a small clinic and see how that goes. We would totally be happy to do it.
Free shop, we buy in the book mobile.
Well, unless you have anything by the way moments, we'll let you on to your day. Thank you all for coming. It's nice to meet you all. Yeah, um, and thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Rachel, Jessica and Kay, thank you. And Cassandra, congratulations. Lizzie, nice to meet you.
Thanks, guys.
See ya.
Bye bye. All the busy kids.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
See Mary Louise. Is that what the plan was to go, Mary Louise, looky there. The tour is yours.
Thanks. I think all I'm supposed to be doing is justifying why I asked for a little bit more money.
Just so those spots, you don't have to go line by line.
Okay, so I asked for more money because we haven't asked for more money in, I don't know, five or six years. And because our professional improvement stuff has went up, so we upped that a little bit by two hundred and fifty dollars, because we haven't been able to do professional improvement other than virtually. And hopefully we'll be able to travel. Um, books and subscriptions increased by seventy-five dollars, because subscriptions have increased. And then I put money back into cleaning supplies for two hundred and fifty dollars, because the fairgrounds no longer cleans our meeting room. So we gotta have supplies to be able to do it. So those are the three things that I increased. And then I, I did ask for one percent money for carpeting, because we have original carpeting. And it's getting pretty hard to make it look presentable. And it's also fraying in several places and we hope somebody doesn't kill themselves.
I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think how long that building's been there, but maybe forty years or something.
No, they haven't, it's not been that long that, because they used to be upstairs next to Crashing Duck.
That's right.
Where Extension was.
Oh, gosh. So you're saying original probably when Extension died.
Uh huh. Uh, so I think it's about, well, it's probably about thirty years. Yeah. So it's probably about thirty years. I don't know. It was, uh, pre-everybody here, I'm sure.
Yeah, nineteen ninety years.
Yeah. Dear ever?
I did.
Okay, when they were upstairs?
Yeah, when they were next to me.
Uh huh.
It was, it's been a little bit and, um, turned off already.
Mary Kay.
Yep.
So when did they move, Jackie?
Oh, goodness. That's when we obtained the space to get the one department. So.
So was that like in eighty-eight? Okay, because I, I don't, I mean, I knew everybody, but I didn't live here then. So, yeah, so. So what questions do you have?
I don't know, five twenty-five seems like a lot to ask.
Okay.
It's super neat, pretty good. No. Yeah, yeah. Mary Louise, thank you very much. It seems fairly reasonable to me.
You guys are welcome. I don't envy you guys your job. Yeah, uh, I have to go to shop then. So as soon as you get done, tell me. Okay. But you've always leaving by the door, because I'll be back. Okay. So yeah, and thanks for, you guys need to go vote for carnival posters.
Do I get it?
Yes, you got the Diver survey.
So, did you see I did it last week?
I, it's anonymous. Because I just have the free survey, so it's anonymous. But thank you for voting.
Thanks, guys.
See you, Mary Louise. All right. So one percent requests.
Degree isn't like molecular biology or something like that. It's crazy.
So I'm guessing we can pull up. It looks like we have Microsoft Office installed. So if we had the one percent, do you want to do that? Is that not helpful? Does anyone have any preference? Community partners or?
County.
County? Excuse me. Just, you know, how about the county request since it's first, it's on the list there? The one percent, does it work better if we go community partners first? Doesn't matter. Hey David, could you head back over here and, and map us to the P driver? Probably need that for the rest of the day. Just do it on the paper that we have right in front of us. Is that the accurate?
Look at you printouts. Which one is the more, the one you know? This one's for you. That is. Oh, yes, it's two days. So this is the, oh, that. So the one that she printed out and had on the desk is the most recent.
I can't remember the process to make this easier. Is it, do we just go down line by line or do we go department by department? How we did this?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Sure, sure. Everybody need a break? Everybody need a break? Tracy, did some of these not come over? So it looks like there's a building HVAC contract long for zero, but I thought we had thirty five thousand in that? Is that not a 1% to ask?
Didn't he have it in his general?
I don't see it. And there's still not an HVAC contract?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, yeah, cause I think there's, I just noticed that in the window. The window cleaning was like four hundred bucks, it's not a big deal, but the HVAC was thirty five thousand. Yeah.
No, I am not an expert on expenditures, so feel free to jump.
Because the first line item is that I mean, what, so that she could not only make the suit, but also the commissioners probably are on the project, but how it has developed and the benefits and the pros. So I kind of put Gina on the spot here, but I really think it's important because she works more with it than anybody else right now. And the working relationship that we have with our officers, they have gone above and beyond really. Always working, helping us when they discover something that may not, when they have a question about. And allowing us really be a party to this whole project. So Gina, if you just want to give us your thoughts and processes.
Well, you know what, actually, I'm gonna kind of back up with the IDOC market, that has exploded. People are on that all the time. Those are our electronic images that people have access to through that website. And they're asked, people are asking all the time, is one of our older records going to be available? So they can do the same thing, so they don't have to come into the office, they can access that. And actually, the Arca Search has done a phenomenal job of being able to tie things together. Like you can search by, if you have a booking page, you can pull up the document right away. If you're just looking by the people's name, by grant or grantee. They have filmed all those books already. So it's just a matter of getting it finished, so people have access to those older records. And they are, actually, they're better images of what we can provide off of our micro business team. The way that they have, they set up at an election building, was it down here? Election building, yeah.
Yep.
Their equipment is, is phenomenal. So, but we just, we get asked that almost every day is when those records are going to be available, so they can access that. And I'm sure that's another income thing that we will make profit off of. Or so just income coming in for people to access it, like IDOC market, people pay for that. Even for a day pass, it's like ten dollars to get in just to look up one document, people willing to do that from there. The attorneys use it, all the surveyors use it, so I just think it's, it's, we're really excited to get it completely done. So I don't know what else to say, but.
What, what are they planning to have at that time Gina? Do you know?
When are they planning to happen?
Yeah.
Well, this, it's our funding that gets them completed. I think we're phase three, are we in phase three or four right now?
Yes.
And actually, they're moving, they've been moving. Um, the commissioners did appropriate some plans before. And so they start the process, they would also I mean, they're in communication with us. I often always seek the questions from Gina, who is my lab specialist, who basically knows and tells you just about anything that's, that's recorded back in the lab room. So, uh, I just wanted her to give you an idea. They also emphasize the working on the commissioner's records. And so now, um, here is just me. So because I think she's the. And the beauty of it is that I can have hospital records, it's an example of the rules. Everything that's in the record that has the word hospital.
Yeah, that, so and so. It is, their systems, yeah. That's what I mean, you can search by the smallest thing and they will find it.
Give you way more information.
Yeah.
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 Because it can sort, group and sort and find way faster than.
Yeah. Or characters.
Ever.
Yeah.
Cause I think you can, for a parcel number, you can see all of the title transactions on that parcel number, right? Or is there some point where they assign parcel numbers?
So we don't connect with the assessor on parcel numbers, which I wish we did.
Right.
And our Tyler program allows that. If they had the same program, we would connect completely with the, with the treasurer, the assessor and us, but we don't have that connection yet. But, so they, they have filmed all the track books, so people can go in and see the track books.
David, one more, David.
But I don't think.
One more thing. We can't get it, I don't, you need to, we need to log it to get Excel. So is that something I can do with my site in, or is that?
No, this is. Thank. This is not what we're trying to look for right now, so hold on, it's talking to Tracy.
Okay.
In the meeting in the chair or something.
Okay.
Rather than trying to do your loading pieces right now, but it's taking forever.
Okay. Okay, thanks David. Sorry Gina.
That's okay.
I saw him leaving.
Sorry, I had the plan, but I didn't get the intention.
Yeah.
So that, so that program is not searchable like that on market, it's more just to pull up the old records and see those old records.
So it's a word search.
Or grant or grantee.
Yeah.
And that by legal dis. Oh, right, so.
Thank you so much Gina, I appreciate it, it's such a cool program, it's getting close to being done. Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
You know, it's interesting, I had one person call me. I don't remember what he, what he didn't like about it. Some sort of a.
To access that, this thing?
Yeah, maybe. He does some sort of service, you know, where he searches those title searches and somehow whatever they, you know, it's, it's quick, but maybe if you got eighty bucks a time, you know, where he used to be to access it for free, now he has to pay ten bucks every time, you know, so. Now I don't remember. I actually sent it to Jackie so she can explain and maybe she would remember.
Yeah.
I can't imagine any, you know, like the theory.
I mean, I can make it.
If you're a land, what they call land man, let's say for a power company that wants to do transmission line, you know, pipeline company or something. You know, you have to research all of these things and, and they used to have to go all up in a hotel and in the jurisdiction, so they could go camp out in the land office in the courthouse or whatever, search the records. And now you don't have to do that anymore. So I don't know why someone would complain about the fee or the alternative would have been to.
Physically take yourself there.
Yeah, it costs a lot more than ten bucks.
Yay, look at us.
Remember Jackie?
That's.
Any complaints about?
I had an inferior, if somebody could get the free service. But I said, you know, I allow the one that I have to allow for all. And so that wasn't, and the fees that we have are competitive around the state, or pretty much standard across the state.
Yeah.
And so.
But I mean, if you had anybody calling, buss about the fees, I mean, how often does that happen?
I've had one gentleman that has still asked about, you know, what I gave him consideration of access to our back end, and I said, I can't do that, basically because it's not allowed to be, then I need to allow.
I bet that's the guy who called me.
That's his name.
We don't have to do that right now.
I'm probably the same person.
If he did, that's the.
He's out of state.
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe Montana.
Yeah.
So we have that up, and just the DA's direct date. And that's what we did last year, right? And so I, I guess we're just, I'll just, onto you guys' knowledge. Does it work better just to keep it a direct date if it's been a direct date? I'm sure it's a reason.
You know, fund transfers, I know, for based on those dollar amount. So that way the history stays in the same thread.
Okay.
But yeah, I think. I mean, once, whatever needs, they really want it.
That's just super fine with me.
You know, I can't remember, there's so much talk about direct date, I can't remember what, how it came out. You know, usually it's a hundred and five million appropriated by the legislature. And there's a formula based on population and assess valuation and some other things that.
We're gonna have about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each base for this coming year.
So that was gonna be my question, what the, what was gonna happen to our portion?
I also would expect because of the ARP money, that that's gonna go down even further in the future.
Yeah, well, it's. I keep thinking about when, right? Through all, through this whole budget process, because the mills, like for the library or care or the hospital, fire, just airport, now, or we just. School district, city, recreation. The mills are a big deal. And the legislature, because oil and gas and coal have taken seventy percent of the revenue comes from those, the states revenue. They're gonna, they are going to say, you know, no more welfare checks, no more redistribution, it's not there. So I don't even know how we got through this session, WCCA and twisted their arms and not reducing that. But the, the challenge that we're gonna run into is that we don't avail ourselves of the, of the ways, the very limited ways that the legislature gives us to, to fund ourselves. They're gonna be very sympathetic to us when, when we come knocking with our hat in our hand. Especially, and it's easy to say no, you don't have the budget, right? So when the money was flowing in and they're filling up the rainy day account and other things, it was easier for them to do that, but they.
So Tracy, so you guys want to just move the DA's to zeros? Because that one, if we put two hundred and fifty thousand in that, well, that, that'll come on the 1% total, right? So let's just move those D, those, those accounts that are direct aid, keep them a direct aid. And then we'll just approve zero dollars or whatever, leave it blank. So the first one would be EMA siren maintenance. Okay, now that's what you do.
Yeah, why does the, the Arca Search have two hundred and fifty thousand in there? I don't really understand that.
To finish archiving, I'm guessing.
Basically, in the original contract, I believe that's how much we appropriated for the five year project. Or it's.
Oh, right, fifty thousand a year.
Actually, no, two hundred and fifty, this whole project is, I think it's.
It's over a million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's huge.
It's funny, I don't remember it being like that, but okay. I can live with that, somehow it just didn't hold that big of a placeholder in my mind.
So this is what means of that original.
Yeah.
Approval.
Yeah.
So what's interesting is you don't realize how many records and of course the records go back to eighteen. How many records that was. My film, action cards, the books. For me. It's, it was my fault, we need to know that's something. We have, and now of course in nineteen ninety seven, we went to the computer, so everything now is being saved. And upload it to the state.
Okay, so the EMA siren maintenance, I'm guessing there's not much you can do other than to say six thousand.
That was a request Gina likes. I've heard, basically, it's a practice. Or a contract now he's taking in, is in place, the contract is in place, and that's the only cost.
Okay. Anybody have a?
So that doesn't have DA next to it, so.
That's 1%, so everything with DA is 1% counting.
The zero is because there was not a current appropriation this year, and so that will help you see if you're.
Right.
Increase or decrease or no increase at all.
Somehow I got sidetracked on the direct date, I thought we were gonna do all of one and then all of the other.
Yeah, well, I think Tracy will probably get us. You wanna just go down the line and if it's direct date, just check it over there?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to do direct date?
Yeah, so I'll totally limit the same page, I don't have to go back.
Super, okay, IT infrastructure, thank you, Eber. They have a current appropriation of twenty five and they're asking for thirty, that's Adam. Anybody want to change that from thirty to some other number?
I'm okay with them staying where they are. I mean, this is like presentations, right? And then at some point we have to kind of have the figure of cash on hand and, you know, there's the, the final balancing, it's pretty hard to just say, oh, I don't like that number, right? You know.
Right. So his was, if I get this correct, was five thousand for office renewal, twenty thousand for network security and five thousand for infrastructure? Is that what's all wrapped up into that thirty thousand?
Right, so so twenty five of it has to be appropriated, the question is.
Yeah.
Is the five thousand for the generalized, I mean, because we haven't asked him what infrastructure that is, although I I know that coming out of the dark ages of our IT. They don't get everything, they have to be selected.
All exactly, but I I do believe it was items that went be covered under the bonded money or the specific bigger stacks. Like the smaller items, I think.
Well, I guess he's got uh network security here for thirty thousand. At least under his budget. And so that's a twenty percent or a twenty thousand dollar raise from the appropriation of last year. And ten thousand from two years ago, two fiscal years ago. Thirty, something else?
I'm I'm okay with it, I mean.
Okay.
About the only way we would know whether to adjust that number is if we have it here with us.
Right, and if we get over budget, then we'll just have to call people and and say, hey, you know, we're above DA, what can you, what can you have, what do you have to have, what should you live without?
No.
Looks like he has a for paper cut licensing um and come along. Zoom came out of there. BLA exchange server standard license from Dell. Barracuda, backup. Goose neck microphone, I'm assuming they do.
Yep.
Ethernet cables. Replacement APC batteries. The Mitel voice switch. Cordless scanner. Or battery backup replacements. SSL certification, Albany County Fair dot org. Kind of and also Tanarak River or batteries. Webcam stand. A lot of tech webcams. Since bridge equipment, I'm not sure if that means. Mitel phone support licensing, but no, that was asked before your mic, I'm sorry. That helps.
Yeah, I'd say just put thirty thousand in there and then if we get over in DA or one percent, we'll just have to ask for people being cut.
So leave it at the thirty?
Leave it at the thirty, would you? So then the next DA is four thousand, they're asking for four thousand. Uh and that is attorney rest law research. That seems to be us.
That's the research tool, it's like Lexis Nexis.
Yeah.
They have to have that for sure.
Extension cleaning contracts, that's zero they're requesting, looks like to me, so that's what they'll get.
You can afford that.
Any more, any more DA on on that list?
Oh.
Okay.
But I know we took more than that out last year because it was like
Didn't.
Five hundred thousand or something.
Yeah, we sort of raided it because it was hanging around from. You know, is it am I right? Sort of been building up or accrued over time a little bit.
I think we have more cash on hand in the one percent than we have anticipated to. So I don't remember the exact details obviously.
Yeah.
All right, so one percent that. Tell me when you're ready, Tracy. Okay.
All right, I'll come back to that little question. All right, whenever you're ready.
All right, EMA siren maintenance, and I think that's a contract if I remember, then Jackie or Blake, so I think we have to go with six thousand. Next one is. Do you put it over in the approved category yet, Tracy? Not yet, okay. Um the next one, EMA siren or EVA emergency supplies and support, three thousand bucks. I I can't remember what's.
His justification says Albany County needs to purchase additional sandbags in order to respond to future flooding events caused by a wildfire. Additional funds will be set aside to support incident standards. In the past, we have expended funds for printing supplies, large maps, computers included for the ELC scattering and.
Fully buy it. Power of unfilled sandbags.
Yeah. I'm fine with three thousand.
Anybody?
Yeah, I don't have it.
It would be interesting to know the totals, you know, budget requests versus anticipated everything. Revenue's cash on hand, yada, 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 so. Because it's hard to do this without knowing how far we have to go. Is that something that's easy to do, Jackie?
I think we, do we have to approve this stuff and then you can put the numbers into that big spreadsheet? And then we'll get that.
We'll get them.
First, Georgia.
Automatically update it.
So we probably need to move faster though.
Get them to be on the same screen together in a size that is readable.
If if that sort of, if that work has been a term later.
Yeah, I think if we.
I don't know that I really wanna pick apart any of these. Uh maybe I only want to um ask for clarification so we could if any, you know, anything we see that we don't understand or whatever that we can.
Right.
Add it back to us with explanation by the time we're ready.
Yeah, see, I I think the building HVAC contract should have some money in there, and I think did you guys put the fifty seven thousand in there in the red? Off to the right hand side of that. Okay. For both of them.
Does that help? Have that thing on the right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the symbol of direct aid is that two hundred and thirty four thousand? Or two eighty four, is that what would show up?
That's what is the total of this home year, the one that you pulled those out of.
Oh, I got you, the sum of the direct aid expenditures.
So it's definitely from the expenditures here.
Yeah.
Did anybody? Yeah, go ahead, did did, I think we're gonna need to put fifty seven thousand into that building HVAC contract wall. And I think we're gonna need to put like five hundred bucks in the building window cleaning, it's like four twenty eight or something or. Two eighty maybe.
Twenty three, twenty so five thousand.
So. Yeah, that's simply between all of these.
But the long section?
Yeah.
The long.
Yeah, that's all part of this line.
So very slightly.
Yeah, all of these, all of these.
The HVAC. But I mean, why is HVAC like?
So Jackie, it's up on the right hand side where it is being updated before we got here.
Okay, okay. Great.
I I tell you, you know. This was, you had almost. And there was this point. There's a twenty five thousand in this line, but it has no description on the line.
The right, there's twenty five thousand. That has no, so you can pay with the zero, but sorry, technical difficulties.
Don't worry, I'll play it around, I'll play it along.
Yes, I have no idea, most of that's right, I'm sure it's within for something, but what?
You think it's safe to zero it up? You think we'll always go back, I mean, we will, I will assume we'll back, I think we should all work with that, that we've got everything posted.
Okay, I took it up. All right, I think Tracy's technical difficulties are solved.
So that twenty five thousand is new.
Yes.
Okay.
It's like it didn't have a hold, but. Okay. Yeah, it's just hanging out there all day.
It's a moment.
Okay.
Tell me when you're ready.
I put it in one percent and you just put it into general fund over here, right? So we have it two places. Yeah, so then we need to zero that one.
Yeah, I just wanna be sure, so that we're, when we wanted to come up with.
I don't know, I just put it in there because.
But it is in his budget.
It is.
Okay.
So it's zeroed here.
Zeroed here, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And is it the same thing for the HVAC on that, was that in his budget? I don't believe it was, but.
The which?
HVAC.
Oh. No, that was not.
That is not.
That needed to be it, that was a good catch, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's funny, you can't remember if it was in both places and needed to be taken out of one or the other, I don't know why I can't remember this.
Okay.
Well, it's confusing, this is the hard part of deciding where the.
Right. So tell us when you're ready to start.
I am ready, Jackie is ready.
Okay, all right, I just don't wanna soak that in, okay.
Okay, so we're at what, three, item three, or where where are we on this list?
Um we just added the fifty seven thousand for the HVAC for long.
Okay.
But then you kind of skipped over all of these up there.
Yeah, I wanna go back to where we didn't skip.
Uh let's see, library, I think is the next one.
Library at twenty four, we just heard about that, that's the computer switch out. It's a computer contract, it's a contract for Tag or Tim Gaddis.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's fine at this point, I I really wanna move that to our IT at some point in the future, but but not this year. I gotta ask, we gotta ask Adam about that before. Attorney, that's fine, bulk document destruction, looks like five thousand bucks, that looks like it's about right compared to what you're spending thirty one hundred.
Hey, we're making less documents now that destroyed.
Yeah.
Truth be told.
You know, that whole, that question is why have the offices, we took it out of the the departmental budgets, put it here as a big one time.
Is it less, is it less for the fiscal year where we spent? Because there was a number of times when we were close to the public during the COVID that they did not come. So I I I don't know if five is a regular.
Is it your?
There's a document shred line, general fund. This one is word like change today where we had a big.
A big hurt.
Big hurt, the one in the general and that was paid with the one for shrugs.
Okay, super, is so five thousand, will that pay for the shred party?
The party?
Parties. Okay, okay, so let's move on there, um looks like extension clean contract, that's a done deal. Rent taxes, utilities. If you guys are fine with thirteen thousand, that seems like reasonable. We're saving on cooling costs right now. I know that's not funny, so it's kind of funny.
I think that's a good use for. That's the.
Okay. Is that what that is for the crime work?
That's gonna be our new satellite office.
Okay, everybody's gonna be jammed in there. If you guys feel like thirteen thousand is fine, let's just move that in. Weed, weed control eighty five hundred, is that for the courthouse? These, these grounds?
Yeah, where is?
No, weed control, yes, for weed effects. That's the only place. For the control, not just weeds. And Lindsay has been very conservative, but basically that is the very last of the last several.
Okay.
Turned out, weeds do a lot of damages.
Yeah.
Well, it looks like it covers it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, computer replacement, that's thirty five thousand. Fifty thousand requested last year, spent twenty eight thousand. That looks reasonable. I think that there's less computer replacements anticipated if I remember correctly, since most everybody's been switched out. Does that number seem reasonable to you guys?
Yeah, we still have the twenty eighteen. Little bit of the bonded money that he's working on too for any of the bigger replacements.
Okay, how much of the twenty eighteen's that is left?
As far as the bonded money, I wanna say he has about thirty thousand. Forty six thousand.
We, um. We have anything left from twenty ten, or did we finally?
No, there's still some money for twenty ten.
And I guess it's twenty ten spent first before we spend twenty eighteen, or?
There, there, I mean, the projects are different, so if, if we can, I usually direct people and channel them to the older money if they have that. Flexibility like Rob.
Okay.
So we got two specific ones, like library roof.
Right.
Spent all but a few couple thousand, and then what are we gonna do, wait twenty five years?
That's really specific.
That's the challenge of the specific purpose tax.
This one is specific as well for the twenty ten, the offer for protection for telephone canyon was written into the ballot. And so that restricts us to that area.
Add to that a hundred and thirty six thousand in there.
The road and bridge has one point, this is retaining, that's.
That carried over, definitely, Tracy?
Yes, until it's all paid, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's been collected already.
Ready? Okay, go down to miscellaneous of a hundred thousand. I'm guessing that's a placeholder. Seems reasonable, I will, what do you guys think? I mean, we only spent twenty thousand, true?
I think that's where you guys, you know, have that ability to be flexible and pay for some of those things, like project graduation. I have to ask the expenditure experts.
Where does our, if we got the grant match request, it can't come from miscellaneous uncommitted, can it?
Not generally. The grant match accounts, they usually figures in a unanticipated grant match line.
Sure, and maybe it was ten thousand.
I don't.
Wasn't a lot, but, but I was just curious if, if we if we are gonna match another grant, you know, an unanticipated grant match spends all of the even the the set aside that she has, do.
I think.
Do we, we, we don't pull that from miscellaneous uncommitted.
I think you could if you so chose to. I mean.
As a general purpose tax, it's not very restricted. So we could.
Okay, how about, you guys are alright with us leaving that in there?
It seems sort of generous. If we're only spending twenty.
It's like, that's our contingency for a lawyer, for the commissioners, for any anything that blows up in their faces, right? Like to hire outside counsel, although we might have money set aside.
I mean, I know in the past we held it in there, and then if it came down to it, that we've reduced it because we needed money more somewhere else. So I guess like Pete said, kind of a placeholder.
Right.
And know that you could.
Transfer.
Maybe move it out of there.
So you guys have somewhere that you make notes, so.
Jackie is amazing at that.
Right. She codes her stuff, so she knows where to go looking. When it's time to cut.
You know, there, you know, and this is a group of God of consideration, we kind of can do it. My suggestion would be, in part of it, but put it into our reserve where we are trying to build to the, I, I started this road, there was eighty five thousand dollars. The badness of reserve, we can't touch unless there's a total catastrophe that, you know, we have to pay, we should kind of lose three months of insurance. And eight five thousand every year. Actually, that time is a lot. We've been able to move that reserve to.
I think the balance is in my pocket, but I'm trying to untie those holes. And I, too many windows. So there's these two million one hundred and fifty three thousand four hundred and seventy, general reserve, emergency reserve is eight hundred and twenty three eight seventy one, and then the contingency is currently four million one ninety five three seventy eight.
About three months. I mean, every year we try to put up with. Actually, we will never even touch it unless there is a situation. But I think, you know, in the back of your mind, it's always a hole to put a little bit in, so. Just for that, because we have a type of that, we have purchase, if you want to reduce that, want to put money in.
Good. Alright, down to extension office flooring, forty two thirteen, she just made that presentation. I don't think that that's extravagant.
You only probably got a bid for it.
Yeah. Building HVAC, building HVAC contract I would just put in, so I don't know, we could do much with that. Can we do that at fifty seven thousand, Tracy? Yep. Window cleaning was out because it's in the general courthouse elevator contract. That's a reduction from what it has been before. So I guess it doesn't appear like it came out of one percent from before, or did it? Okay. That seems reasonable to me. You guys just speak up if it's not reasonable. Clark, chip support, that's you, Jackie, so we got the expert right here.
Okay, so these are all things licensing support fees that we have to pay to Tyler Technologies, and so as you see, as you go down, all of these line items, they are all new expenses that we have to basically run the various offices and report.
So that's all in the dark blue, or whatever. So can we just put all of those in?
So the web service module is the same thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and all of those seem to be, if I'm listening to you correctly, that, that, those are all licensures that we have to.
And I thought, I thought the cases of course, those numbers from the various vendors.
Super.
So some of them go away, like your tax sale of the module goes from nine hundred and fifty five percent to zero.
Because we bought the module, stopped one year, and now we just, it's a maintenance. To Tyler.
Super. So this is another question, not for you guys today, but just for the ether. It seems that the library's paying a bunch of money for HR bamboo considering that we get it for six grand for a certain amount of, a bunch of employees. They get it for, or is this a different thing, Amanda?
But ours, the first thing that we did is thirty eight thousand.
Okay.
Twenty eight thousand. Remember, we had two paper engines in there.
Okay.
So they keep us on the on going tab.
Okay.
So it's got so much turnover, we have less employees in there. It's gonna be like twenty nine, we only are eight six to keep our account.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Rachel said they use the payroll feature, if you're bamboo, if you're using that, so.
Okay. My thought was, can we just combine everybody under the same HR, but it doesn't make much sense now, but they're different.
I don't know that we could, because we all have different tax ID, player ID numbers and different taxing, you know, business.
Right, so we see that, we see the expense side for the county, but there's a revenue side, you know, when it comes to HR, right?
Okay, so then we're going down to.
Not for this.
Not for bamboo, but for salary.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is Axon licensing and storage body dash, that's all a contract. I don't know, these, you guys are here to.
Yeah, that comes out of our portion of that.
Okay. So can that take us down to continuing at HR? Is that what I'm thinking?
Any question? Yes.
Okay, continuing at HR three thousand. Is that gonna be going yearly?
For the next five.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I got that wrong. That's not going at one percent. Alright. Yeah. We got a, we got like six hundred and eighty thousand in there, so that we're basically gonna blow that on the body and stuff for the next decade.
Okay.
It's pretty reasonable. I appreciate.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so we did a five year contract, that'll hold up for the account.
Yeah.
And then we'll have the other half for the next five years. So when we redo a big contract, it's twenty eight.
Okay.
Sorry, I got those numbers wrong.
Yeah.
Look at that, we can save.
Yeah, look at that, three thousand for continuing at HR. Is that to make up for not being able to do HR last year, or continuing at HR last year? Okay.
So if she paid the deposit, a fee to attend without travel added, then they would refund that fee in that, because they probably didn't have the confidence.
So all of the continuing ads for me, I don't have an issue with at all, but you guys speak up if you do, and that way we could just approve all of those continuing ads. And that takes you down to the shortage for the north entry renovation, and I think she said one thirty to one ninety, so did you guys just put in the one fifty? Or that, I see it's one fifty there, but what are you, it seemed like one thirty was a reasonable expectation, but it could go as high as one ninety if the slipboard didn't work with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's either gonna be like one thirty five or one ninety.
So we may, we may put one ninety, I'm guessing.
What if we did the other forty out of the building reserve?
Sure.
If you, yeah.
Super contingency.
Super, yeah, okay, as long as you guys are aware.
Well, then we could, it wasn't like one thirty seven or something.
I thought it was one thirty and then one ninety one, because there were sixty one thousand of the slipboard.
Because if we know we can use the building funded, then we should the one thirty in here and then.
Just use the.
Basically separate it out, so.
But all of the one ninety in the.
No, just leave the one thirty that, that I think is what you were saying.
Because we know we're gonna spend it, and we know we're gonna spend it out of this.
The sixty over here.
Sixty over there. That's a good idea, yeah.
And then that item either doesn't get spent, or it does, and if it does, we, we go back.
Yeah, it's a good idea, and then it's, the bookkeeping, I'd be totally in favor of the bookkeeping. If I was these guys, but HVAC repairs, is that covered under the HVAC? I guess it's zero, so never mind. Clerk microfilm.
Actually, to be honest, I
We've worked our way out of that technology.
Yay.
Cool. That's monumental, Jackie.
Yes. That's a new era. E recording, I doc, that must be something that we just have to go with.
That's a lead that we have to pay for the I doc.
Okay, the library, electric trailers, your library checkout materials, the bookmobile. So I have a couple minds of libraries, I love the library, and they do such a wonderful job, but they got a big foundation.
You feel like the foundation should be kicking in a little bit more?
Well, the eleven five of continuing at you know, that's a continuing recurring thing on us if we pay for it, and although I love what they're doing, hundreds of thousands of dollars in that foundation. And a lot of our places don't have foundations, so.
Yeah, you know, when you think about the library foundation, the only, there's only two better foundations in this town, probably, that's the hospital. UW foundation.
Yeah.
Like, I'm trying to think of any others, you know, better.
Front row's foundation, four H foundation.
Are those in that type of money? Are they in the?
The fairgrounds can be, because they did the range arena, they've been supporting the range arena. The four H one is not as much, they do more scholarship programs than they do anything else.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be nice to know supplemental funding for next year, you know, where this, what the sources is, and what the source can be and what's in there. I heard the rec board have this discussion with the library, and you know, they were like, yeah, we'd love to, we love what you're doing, but you just can't keep amassing this amount of money in a, in a foundation and then take it out of the general, of the rec board funding, and so I think that's a reasonable. Take it out of the general, of the rec board funding, and so I think that's a reasonable approach to that. So I, there was eleven-five that. Man, I love the library, but. Yeah, no. But I don't see it out there. I see checkout materials, bamboo, HR, and library computer upgrade. Okay.
So in here we. Further up, we have the. IT server.
The twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, continuing yet, the luxury's not in there.
They just put that on the general fund, is that?
Maybe that's gonna come out of the mills.
Maybe it's coming out of their mills. Okay. Yeah, it doesn't appear like it's in there. Never mind, I'll stop the rant.
Well, it's a good thought because it teaches us something, you know, I don't know that I would have thought. That, and it's probably because I don't know, I've never been the library liaison, so I don't know how much is in the foundation, right?
Yeah.
So, so it wouldn't occur to me, so it's good.
Yeah. But I, I would, that would be nice to have that, those foundations that directly support entities. Because that gives you a better picture overall financially, I think that's helpful, you know. Not for next year.
Yeah, they have something that they like to do, and I think that it's. You know how foundations can sort of be set up for a purpose? And I don't know that they're necessarily restricted by, by anything, but I know that they like to buy materials.
Yeah.
The foundation.
Bamboo is eight thousand for them instead of the three thousand that I'm looking at. Is that eight thousand?
I'm just looking at adding states.
Sure, yep, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't, that I didn't take bad notes, and then the one thing that they said was a stretch was the. Bookmobile materials at ten grand, and so if we could, in my mind, asterisk that one.
The bookmobile materials, that's, that's right up the foundation alley, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm all right with doing what, what you did with that, Tracy, taking it to zero, but if you guys, anybody else has heartburn over that, please. Feel free. Yes, we did, I think, Tracy.
Yeah.
So that takes us down all the way to IT generators maintenance. What are you gonna do? Maintain the generators. Oh, okay. Okay. Super, thank you. Yep, we did. That takes us to treasurer, I-reg, I-tax modules, and there's nothing.
Yeah, I purchased them last year.
Okay, they're down to Greenwood mapping at sixty-six hundred, is that?
That's right, Chelsea did just send an email saying that she confirmed that that is the cost.
Okay.
So it hasn't.
Okay.
So we would maybe. Make a separate deal with Greenwood mapping if we need to help out with redistricting and that. Would we want to pay that out of this or where would we get that money from if it's something that we would do? This morning, you said. Would be one of those things that pops up.
I did not deal with into one percent at all, I mean, right here, like. In my election budget, but, but if you. As a pass, but if you want to.
Well, it seemed like a fair certainty that. That she would need some guidance, you know, a little bit of help with that.
Yeah, do you have an idea of what that might cost, Jackie? Couple thousand?
I, I need to begin with five thousand dollars. That was my contract number, I didn't give them, I would guess.
Oh, right, like if, if Alan wanted to come back and do it or help us do it.
Put it in my request under elections for, it's already in my electoral budget. And so, but if, but if it's a contract, I mean, it could be a contract that I have to do with, with Greenwood Services. You know, therefore, if he has the ability to assist and take on all work, that would be great, I would vote with him. If he doesn't, then I have to, I may have to go out, and I don't know outside of Alan, I will be moved out. I would vote too, to be honest with you. Unless one of my neighboring colleagues were talking like. Matt, who likes their TIS, Maverick was sisters.
Yeah. Should we leave that in there like it is at five thousand under Greenwood mapping redistricting, or do you think there's a?
No, that would be fine.
Okay, will that be a double with, if it's in your elections?
I'll take it out of the election.
Okay.
We had it in the general.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, actually, it was if.
Well, and then.
Ask, and so it's not, it's not numbered anywhere else.
Okay, attorney fam care reports, I'm sure that has to happen. What are the red Xs by the, the side there? Does anybody have any ideas?
I don't know. Amanda, do you know?
Okay. Okay, awesome. The sixty thousand made a pretty strong case for that yesterday because they were already spending it. And we might as well budget for it. Gatekeeper services, twenty-four thousand. Yeah. I'm still kind of like uncertain if that's our cost or not.
Well, it's hard to pencil that out, right? Because if you're sending people to Title twenty-five, you could spend a lot more than twenty, you know. A lot more than twenty-four thousand bucks. Because you don't have somebody at the front end sort of pre-screening or sorting or whatever.
Right.
That, that's like a, a mental health diversion program.
Yeah. But I'm just wondering.
And we don't have Peggy getting here to comment on it. Maybe somebody in that office knows more about that, how, how well it works. So, but it's hard to do.
So we didn't spend any money last year on gatekeeping. Some, was gatekeeping not being done last year?
Well, that's.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we were a little bit of a pilot program and then they got DFS to buy and pay for it.
Yeah, I guess a question mark by that, if we didn't spend any money there, I don't. Did you pay for it? Yeah, yeah. I think with CARES Act funding, they should, but.
That is true.
Yeah.
We should twist their arms hard.
Yeah.
And save the twenty-four grand.
Yeah.
When, when they, when so much money shows up that you have to go turn over every rock to figure out where to spend it, and there's still so much over.
Right.
This is a rock we can turn over.
Yeah, juvenile detention or juvenile diversion program, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So that seems like that number is accurate if I remember correctly. Any, any worry about that? Okay. Is that in the general fund?
Yeah.
Well, juvenile diversion is definite, I was trying to imagine how gatekeeper would be in the DFS realm because that's.
Sorry, I have those.
Yeah.
Yeah, zero it out, it sounds like to me, and I still want the question mark on gatekeeping, I think, because. Who knows, right? I'd love to know what, if that's being paid by DFS, that'd be great. We'd send them a thank you card. Locating witnesses, victims app, victims app, seems like we use it. Planner contract addressing materials, two thousand. That was Davis for new signs.
Oh, yeah.
And then Aqua for Protection, and that's nothing, and then Vacation Approval, thirty thousand, there's nothing we, we can do about that at all, so, or should?
So the Aqua for Protection, Public Education. What's that, five hundred books for now, I don't know, look at what column it is.
I think, did you request, oh, yeah, you requested five hundred. Yeah, it was, yeah, it was last year, right?
It was the appropriation and none, none was spent.
Yeah.
I don't know why that is. Busy.
Okay, so that. What does that leave us with then, Trace?
Two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
In.
Nine hundred and five.
Okay.
With the little bit of cash that's on hand, I, this should go up to this cash on hand number, but we just haven't received the. Self-check, check for this one yet, at the time I did this, I should say.
Okay.
Insert passport. Right specific.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That is not in there.
Yeah, good catch, it's three thousand, I think.
Right, specific recent destination here.
Yeah, you could abbreviate it, you could say SSI peer review.
I like that. Three thousand.
Do you have a general idea of what one percent brings to us? Is it a million in a quarter?
I have it at eight hundred and fifty thousand this current year. Prior to the June one, I think we're already at eight hundred and ninety, but this year is kind of exceptional, so I kind of backed it back down to where we had it previously.
Okay, eight fifty?
Eight fifty, yeah.
And has that been something that we wanted? To meet with our requests? Do we want to do eight fifty for eight fifty? I just want to remember kind of what historically this body's done. Have we overspent it? Historically, or have we kept it at eight fifty?
Back in the day, it used to stay at like seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty, and then we upped the revenue, and then. As far as over-expending, we try to utilize that cash. Because for whatever reason. Maybe like miscellaneous uncommitted doesn't get spent, so it turns into cash at the end of the fiscal year, and then. You have that cash available for reallocation.
Do you feel comfortable with this number at eight ninety? Knowing that we've only spent like twenty-some of the, of the miscellaneous and that the cash would, that would go to cash? Or, or do you think we need to make this number smaller?
I think it's okay because with that eight ninety.
There's a twenty-four thousand that we might not spend, and then there's the miscellaneous cash that will roll over to cash on hand here in a month.
Let's take it out, so let me take this out too. So it is over spent. Because we already took them out on, zeroed them on that worksheet, but we should have another check come in.
So as we stand today, we would be overspent, but?
Yeah, by fourteen thousand ninety-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so that's out of one percent too?
There's twenty-six thousand right now, and then we need to resolve that hardship third thing for. Because we budgeted a different number, but there's not that much in it. So there will be additionally, I just don't know that.
And then we have a hundred, almost two hundred thousand in requests for. Community partners. I'm not sure where else we have. You know, the twenty-four thousand that's under gatekeeping, that, I think we have room there, but I don't know, right?
But you don't want to zap a program or ask somebody first.
Right. You guys. What do you think we should be down to, to accommodate community partners at? And to be down to seven, seven and a quarter, seven fifty to?
I have a question. But I still want you to know that number may be used. But it was that. But I do have an email.
Yeah, I can't read the far side of the screen, so I can't tell.
Do you need to see it?
Oh, just. We have some carryover direct aid and then. We have an estimate on the revenue side for what it will be, and you said we were gonna go backwards by a hundred forty thousand or something. You know, in this year's direct aid from what we typically get.
That, that's with what, what's in the WCCA, WGS, and there's no cash.
Got it. So. Maybe we used to hold or. Something, some, not spend all of the direct data over the capital, but now we're at the place where we are. Or have we always spent?
Because we had to amend the budget in September. For the north entry. Increased three hundred and sixteen thousand expenditures there, which, what I was. Been working with Jackie on is, we budgeted a certain portion from direct aid to go back into one percent. And that number, I don't have the numbers in front of me from last, for this fiscal year, so one percent. So 1% will go up, but I have to deduct whatever is going to be finished out. For the North entry of this year from the 1% transfer. That makes sense. Because I can't. Put it in the negative.
So their direct aid hardship is. Is that a zero in beginning cash?
Yeah.
Estimated revenue of what's that 1.2?
1.769.
1.7.
Um, the grant match amount historically, there's usually cash left over in grant match and then we deduct. Their. Request for grant match by that cash, you know, when transferred. So if there's 100,000 left in the grant match, we would just do 352,607. Um, but those final vouchers for June haven't been done. And I'm just not 100% sure what that it's going to look like. So I know Bailey was back home working really hard and. Spent money.
Yeah. And so, you know, we have 100,000 of this miscellaneous account. Just call back to suit idea. Is there benefit for us to keep it at 100,000 other than as a placeholder? Is there another place where that placeholder could be filled? Could it be?
Yeah. If we, and I don't know. You know, to. How much to allocate to that one, but we also pay the IT expenses. Here, I don't know if this is the right thing. This is.
Nope.
Thinking out loud.
No.
We just had it here. Those expenses building that funding might not exert building that one. Uh, that was for you. A lot of stuff, but I am just thinking outside the box.
Can you use direct aid for for that type of funding?
I think so, because we can use it for operational costs outside of personnel.
Yeah, so when we add together the county requests and the. And the community partners for outside requests for. What did you say? We had 1.77? No, 1.767.
Yeah, 1.769 in in direct aid.
Yeah.
Unity partners about at 1%. So I think Jackie is thinking to put the IT. Or I'm thinking along with Jackie, put the IT under direct aid, remove it from 1% and then that gives us. The ability to do more with unity partners. And then start that IT up or your account under directly.
That's but it's going to go away.
Yeah.
That would be a 10% cut to the general.
So this is the community. Partners this number here right now. So that would be the shortfall. And then looks like all the licensing is about 360,000. Ever take the? I don't know if you want like the building. Agents and those things. Licensing.
Why does it do those spooky asterisks in the?
Like the format or that's some the equation that's underneath it or they're saying, okay, there's a problem. You got to check this out. Exclamation point there. Yeah.
Well, when you entered on the right the right hand page. With this. The, I don't know, it's what does it say? New estimated cash balance? But in the way it would be like, what does that mean?
What is?
No, what is the number mean that's got punctuation in it?
777.
Yeah.
In the whole.
Except it's got asterisks on that. No, I see. I see now. Apparently my eyes do something funny.
What's that a new angle? Maybe if I turn it a little bit, it may get a little quieter from the light.
Well, it's kind of like like I your screens are black to me. Cause you have that.
Yeah.
There's something about the way it does it. If it was pointing towards me there. But it's okay.
So yeah, yeah. Like what we need licensure of of 1% maybe in the EA.
It is. Yeah. That's. 100, 132,000. His licensing.
We can do.
192,000. 192,500. So in this formula here for various licensing and so forth. As 57,000 for the building. And everything back to. There. So all those items are in this.
Everything with the exception of the first two. Three.
So Tracy, you think you take up all of the licensure and put it under EA instead of IT licensure alone?
I I think that's what you're kind of thinking is move all the licensing into direct aid. The it well, making starting that IT depreciation sinking fund.
Looks like the depreciation recovery.
Yeah. Into funding it initially all from direct aid, starting the new fund and it'll always be in there forever and ever.
Can we run out of? Yeah.
Their dedication.
Appreciations and non cash expense.
Yes and no.
Yeah.
It'll be in its own pot forever. So it will be gaining that. Annual cost.
Right?
What does that do to to your work mandate? Does that cause a bunch of nonsense for you? Okay.
Yeah. Long sight of the world.
Somebody's got to.
Yeah.
The three year. Make sure we have everything on there.
They may or may not be in the same order.
It's and it's not.
Well, and some of that 360,000 is not particularly IT related, right? It's HVAC and window cleaning and.
Yeah, window, yeah, I'm sure, but yes, it's in that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, windows are zero, sorry. But maybe everything but HVAC is certainly in there. Side.
So here I have creating the IT fund and I summed up everything that's over here. Minus the 57,000.
Yep.
So that's the total of all that.
Yep.
And then I'm just deducting it just for the ease of not changing that.
Right.
Right now.
Okay.
And what's that total over on the right hand side? Tracy, I can't see.
This.
872.
Is 872,000. Four dollars left in direct aid still.
And that gives us a positive balance of 96 to 96 if we were to fully fund all of the community partners in 1%. Is. Is that advantageous? To have a balance if 1% is it more flexible and 1% than it is in direct aid? Or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that's a better pain to do.
Because the 1% optional is more flexible. I mean, you can have the personnel cost. Out of there rather than direct aid. That that's the biggest flexibility.
Okay.
Is that?
The 1%.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you guys all right?
Yeah.
That is a starting point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tracy, how about you? You all right with that? Is that?
Yeah, um, I guess the other thing is it because he wants to create that basically a sinking fund for the depreciation. So do you want to up that from? On the creation of the IT fund to be go beyond the 303,000?
Hey, I was thinking about it. If we get to the end of this process and we have.
Add something.
Add some money in. And see what what happens from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically doing accrue something. So there's not.
That's right.
You know, the Roger Rabbit piano falling out of the sky on commission in three years.
Right. And they these things are always going to be charged generally unless they go away. And so.
Oh, I don't know. It could be the Bugs Bunny safe, but you know, the idea of a catastrophe coming from nowhere is a piano or a safe or something just landing on.
Acne explosion.
Yeah, an handle. It could be a big boulder. You know, under the Road Runner. I mean, under the Quailie Coyote.
So. Do you guys feel good about 1%?
I just want to make a disclaimer that highlighted each area and direct aid there. I deleted that because it was auto populating a formula to deduct. This amount because that's what we did last year.
Right.
So that changed this number to 679,022.
Oh, it kept that instruction in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, because I just purpose of worksheet and I'll have to look at that.
Okay.
Try to zero those things out so we start fresh, but.
Perfect. Can we move to community partners? Do you want to move along that line? All right. You ready?
Do you want me to go ahead and populate the proof column with these as we go?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
So it looks like Family Promise requesting 7500 was approved for 2000. Last year and and the year before. Your you guys' thoughts. We've we've budgeted now fully funding all of these. At least as we stand right now. As requested, but we don't necessarily have to do that. We have.
That would be remarkable. No one would expect that.
Yeah, well, we have some new ones, you know, like Fire District just said 20 grand. Uh, Pilot Hill said 12 and a half. Laramie Amateur Hockey Club, which seems surprising to me. It's at 4, 4,032, but. Why aren't they direct for?
You're right.
You know, and I'm wondering if. Yeah, that's a.
1% generally, you know. Can you imagine Laramie Swim Club?
Right.
You know, or the.
I make a plug for Family Promise.
Sure.
My new my new hat of eWrap.
Yeah.
They have the need.
Yeah.
That's all I got to.
Yeah, Family Promise is a good organization.
Okay, so when we get down to downtown clinic, we'll skip back to the very last. Okay, what do you think about 7500 for Family Promise? Are you all right with that?
I'm good.
I'm I'm fine with it. I mean, well, I'd rather find. Savings somewhere else in here.
Yeah.
But sometimes I get family promise and my front door and mid stuff.
Yeah.
One of them. Merged with or or. Absorbed habitat for humanity and I can't remember which one of that's.
My front door. Family Promise is the homeless for our families.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And it's in the Presbyterian Church right up the street.
Yep, their day center, then they move around other churches throughout the year. Go through the overnights and stuff. Development Preschool of 2000. I personally don't have a problem with that. Um, cheaper.
Yeah, let's go. I I will. I'll only say something if I.
Okay.
Have a question.
Okay, that's a great idea. Our regional services at 5,000. 5,000, I know that. Uh, Climb Wyoming 1,000. Every Soup Kitchen 2,000.
You know, something interesting about this with CARES Act money. I don't know if their if their requests changed because of the because of CARES Act, but a lot of these are would be in receipt of it. And it. It would be interesting to know how that washes through. Cause.
Yeah.
Because some of these organizations. For whatever reason, they don't get CARES Act money. I don't really.
The only way that we were able to access it at the clinic was at the end of the year. You could put in for. I infrastructure, IT. And something else.
And reimbursement of COVID related expenses.
But that was.
Already had to expend it, right?
You had to already expend it. So then.
Not be reimbursed by any other money.
Right. And you were done at December 31st. I'm not sure. Do you remember how many people put in for that? It was like 12 or 13 agencies, but that was.
Remember the.
2020 expenditures.
Agencies for the kids funding.
Yeah.
On the CSPG, we had. Our four or five entities.
Right.
But that's the that's the authority for the CSPG program.
Yeah. Okay, Soup Kitchen 2 grand.
Yeah, I actually think that. I never saw anybody who's as good of a steward as.
Tim.
It's Tim. I wanted to say Tim, but I went slap Tim. Yeah, Tim. The guy's a complete stud. And it surprises me that he didn't request more.
Laramie Foster Closet 6,000. Home on the Range Animal Haven. It's 8,000. Nothing approved last year.
Yeah, I think I. That's quirky. And to me, I always want to take care of people first. You know, that's something that that's um. That ought to be privately funded.
Yeah, sure. You want zero? Is that what you thought?
Thank you. I know, and it's really cute.
And they don't do a lot with this passion with fire.
Yeah. But it's basically. It's basically a hobby charity and. This is, do you know what I mean?
I totally agree.
So Greater Big Brothers Big Sisters 8,000. Every Reproductive Health 1,500. How Many County Safe Project 5,000. Interfaith 20,000. Epsom Center for Gasoline 10,000. Hospice of Laramie 6,200. Skip that one. Cathedral Home for Children, Laramie Youth Crisis Center for 20,000. Uh, Bill Mothers Build the World 2,000. Then you guys just stopped me, right? United Way of Albany County 4,000.
Yeah, I can't remember. You know. In community partners, sometimes things appear to. To duplicate services and they don't.
Right.
You know what I mean? But I can't remember what build the mother build mothers build the world is.
It's education stipends, isn't it? And maybe some daycare services for people going to school for single moms.
Gotcha.
We can bring up that. Can we have that request in the folder, Jackie? There.
So it's kind of like what Klein does, but but it probably does it a different way. Right, right, Klein is a. Yeah. This would be self guided as opposed to Klein, which is. Really structured.
Yeah.
I actually. I'm fine with it, I I like that, I. You know, the the challenge is you make these decisions quickly, but you. You can't really. Understand the effectiveness or whatever of it.
I'm I'm anytime to improve somebody's education.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, United Way of Albany County, four thousand. So H R B did robust the hockey club, but. I think that there's money available still left over in the record and I would like to see them go pursue it uh. And then the record opened up. I wanna say they did, but I'm not sure what this is about, I mean, this is a record deal here.
Yeah.
The hockey club is, I don't know what this is, but.
Well, I don't see. I mean, it's a private sports club.
Yeah.
There there's no reason for it in. Yeah, to your point, it's always good to improve someone's education, the question is, does do they? Sometimes people don't fulfill their mission statement very well, and I don't mean that as a criticism as criticism of that program. It's just that it's hard. You know, if you fund something that's not very effective, that takes dollars away from funding something similar that is.
She's fairly used.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotta help her.
So the hard thing is, you know, if you have nothing and you start with nothing, it's hard to. It's hard to prove your. The effectiveness of your organization.
And Jackie, you said you we knew what this was about?
Yes, in Super Kids Ice Divided Wars.
Yeah, that's that's gotta be a rec thing, yeah. I think I've seen that come up, and I'm not sure why that's been. Denied by the Rec Center or if it has been for the Rec Board, but.
Well, even Laramie Bike.
Yeah, Laramie Bike next, is that for trail signage or something like that? But that's also very like rec board.
It is rec board stuff.
And they have money, like they have a hundred thousand dollars, and they said, hey, we want smaller loan.
The balance is supportive winter trails and grooming program.
Winter trails and grooming program also. Happy Jack.
So they and they kind of, don't they sort of work with the Nordic?
They yeah.
Association that.
They groom the they snow bike and the um trails for snowshoeing. With I think they call the hog or the big or something that I like. That's ours, hunting around animals, right? What do you think about that then?
Yes, there's nothing, oh, do you want it? There was no zeros.
It does seem to be rec board.
I can put zero.
We've done. Like, I don't see that association, whatever reason.
Yeah, when we fund them, where does it where does it pay out of? This, right?
I thought so, the rec.
When the Nordic Association asks.
We do, we admit when you approve their application that nobody holds that one.
Okay, so they didn't ask for anybody this year, is that what I'm looking at?
No, it's right at the bottom, it's the last entry.
But they don't.
And they didn't request it.
They did. When the uh record application did the Nordic. Ask for funding from Albany County. Or when they're right, we don't ask for the.
The record, I think they just went right through the record.
Hi.
And they and I think the narrative was that they thought that budgeting would be troubling for the county, so they reduced their one percent to zero, but I'm not sure if I remember it.
Well. So what's interesting is the rec boards funded by mills, which is property tax, and this is sales tax, so. There could be a longer term strategy in their minds if. You know, and it what you funded out of is in a sense, a policy direction, right?
Yep.
There's a distinct possibility when wind farms are built that the. The mills, well, and the sales tax, but the the mills will. Create a stepped up but stable. You know, increase in funds from the Rec Board and all the others, and then. Some of these that are on the edges that that, you know, then we would wanna shift them over so they don't have money left over, right? Because. General purpose tax money can be used on more things than than Rec Board money can. So then you want anything that could access and use that money, you wanna send them that way so that. This is more available to the soup kitchen or Interfaith or whatever.
Yep.
Like I actually, these three new ones that are. Recreation oriented plus the Nordic Association, it would be super cool if they could go. The the Rec Board route and get funded, but you wouldn't wanna send them that way unless. Unless you knew that was gonna happen, right?
Right. Yeah, I'm I'm with you on that, Bieber, there's money not available to the soup kitchen at the Rec Center or the Rec Board. So if you're a rec entity, then you have one percent and rec board money that you can write or do the soup kitchen, then you can only. Unless you have some exercise lunch program, which is a really hard thing to do.
Exactly. Well, it's interesting, it it says something about stewardship when people. Are concerned about for us and our budget and the decisions we have to make.
Yeah.
So they. They remove themselves from the table for whatever reason, cause. We can't know all the ins and outs, they can come back and come back without us, so I find that to be really. Nice and also kind of sad that that's how we do things here, you know?
Jackie, would there be a way that we could send those entities to where rec say we're not? Could you go access the rec board funds and then come back to us later if you cannot make that happen? I think that's a reasonable request of them, what do you think? What's that?
Has the the record not already?
Um they had appropriate, but then they had a hundred thousand extra dollars that they wanted to open up for smaller. And to you know, smaller five thousand, ten thousand dollar grants, and I think these are right, these are right in there.
I'm with that, as long as we're always consistent.
Right.
We're not. They giving something to fight.
Right, right, yeah. If if you guys are are.
I like it.
That makes it.
Yeah.
Fairly straightforward.
You just need to know that they could come back to us, I mean. You're talking about one percent money. All four of those should be funded out of rec board money, I think can be.
And then that would give them direction for next year to say, hey.
It'd be the Rocky, the Bike Nits, Pilot Hill and Nordic.
Nordic Association.
And and that board is better equipped to to vet their application.
Yeah.
They ask different questions, they have a different mission.
Yep. Okay, so that takes us down to Relative Pediatrics at six thousand. Alright, Science Loves Art at ten thousand. Uh Lamy Business Center, Women's Business Center twenty five hundred. Friends of Community Rec five thousand.
I want to, I. Not from uh basically the the this is the beginning, I wanted to inform you that we have decided to move Friends of the Laramie State Park to the financial sponsor. To a new fiscal sponsor as we dissolve Friends of Community Rec.
Okay.
Last year to tell the community partner funds are the last of the grant we have to wrap up. Expect to have all kinds of experiments recorded within the month. I will be in touch when the new fiscal sponsor is set up to accept their this year's community partner grant funds. City community and we. We will not, I've not, not any correspondences to. Uh basically have um taken over this particular.
So Friends of Recreation started to build the Rec Center back in the day. And when that got done, then their budget and activity went way down and they. They've done some things as needed along the way, right?
Well, I don't know who the uh the new uh sponsor will be. So it definitely is not going to go to uh Friends of Laramie uh Friends of Community Rec. So I don't know if you want to.
Well, it's interesting that one. There there's a lot of unknowns, but that one could go to the Rec Board also.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, Laramie Place Civic Center ninety five hundred um Public Art Coalition five thousand, Lincoln Community Center two thousand. Laramie Plain Civic Center Foundation, Rec Mill Match two thousand. What the hell does that mean?
You submitted the two thousand dollars when they when they applied for uh their application to the Rec Board.
Oh, right, that's our matcher. Uh you know how we take applications and the city gets way more than us, we get like six and we have forty six or something, right? Maybe not, maybe they only have twenty six, we have six, but yeah, so.
That's the only foundation grant that we do, right?
That's the only foundation that we requested funds for uh accounts.
Yeah. What do you guys think about that?
Yeah, we were matching, were they doing, were they fixing gym stuff?
Is that not a commitment? Is that not a commitment to me?
Yeah, I just wanna think going forward to send out guidance, if you're a Rec Center. You're a Rec Board entity, maybe we include that, and if you're. We if we've already committed to commit, but then we give them guidance next year, please don't think you're gonna come back, that doesn't seem to fit. I don't know.
So the people will leave the gym open.
Yeah.
You know something interesting, the the Rec Board. Would likely. Decline that. Because they like to do things that are, like, maybe they would repaint the lines on the floor or buy new basketball rooms or something. But like. When it when it becomes peripheral enough to education, cause that's like an infrastructure thing related to that building. It gets it gets tough when you start, the further away you get from the very direct. You know, straight into, you know, they'd rather buy tennis balls or build a tennis court than, you know, build a parking lot next to a tennis court. You know, so. Even though it's kind of recreation related, it's really not, right, so. They actually could run into into the buzzsaw of no when they're doing, so it makes management easier and security easier, cause.
I think they funded some of this, I'm not sure if they funded all of this um at the Rec Board, I think they. Had some concerns about. The cloud uh and security with this, but they did talk some of this. So I'm trying to remember what exactly, you know, this was said that put all punch pads, so that people could punch into the gym or go to the art work there or, you know.
So the building doesn't accidentally get left on walkout, yeah.
Yeah. I think this is funded, but I'm not sure it's someone. So. How did they put in a grant with us being? A cosigner or two thousand dollars if they don't know for sure. Okay.
So it's essentially they're splitting the grant match between one percent and Rec Board.
Yeah.
It's not a bad idea, actually. It's not a bad idea.
I guess I'm alright with it if they submit this stuff, but I think guides along with direct equals guide to say, hey, this is probably not an expectation going forward. You know, I don't know what you guys think about it, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's something is in there, maybe.
Yeah, I remember, this is what, this is how we prioritize.
Right.
Or is this yours?
I think this is us, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it is you, no. It came up on my Google search.
Yeah. But I remember some of that with wiring, right? Electrical wiring and something about.
Well, maybe maybe the record fund is the recreation part, you're asking us for the infrastructure part, I I actually don't really.
Okay, let's move on, and I think the last one is Albany County Fire District at twenty thousand. I see the need. That's that's a marker of twenty thousand that we can expect probably every year at a minimum. And so that's that's a pretty big ask coming out the gate.
Keep in mind, though, they want the pilt money.
But do they have the ability to go after the pilt money?
Um no, I mean.
They don't understand.
Redistribute it to them, but um they're disgruntled that they haven't gotten it to this point.
It's it's because I I tried to explain it to Art, but it's, you know, payment. It's it's because I I tried to explain it to Art, but it's, you know, payment and taxes is, I mean, I don't know if they want. Like their mill levy portion of the pilt, is that what they're asking for?
That's the impression that I get.
If the county gets pilt and and we keep it all, then it's not being distributed like regular property taxed to all mill districts and so on and so forth.
Correct.
Except that if if that was all taxed at the lowest rate. Pilt doesn't even get anywhere near what it would be taxed as like private land.
Right.
Private holdings at the lowest, lowest rate, you know, it's like. A fifth or something. Twenty percent, I don't even know, it's really low.
What, and this was for ADA bathroom or something, or is this just to?
I think this starts them getting towards that ADA bathroom and actually plumbing in the beat of who. Firehouse because there's nothing in there now.
Right.
And should rail tie be going in, they would need facilities. Better facilities than what they have now to respond to any calls.
And do they, they're part of the mitigation, I remember seeing email chain that low impact, see impact box, see we have.
Yeah, they have.
Do they have this in their impact box?
Remember.
The question first will be used to drill deep and connect the potful water well up to two hundred feet. To produce river gorge and then reduce the central station. So this project is a first step toward creating an ADA wash up bathroom shower facility at the station. That would replace a single commode served by overhead tank which relies on batteries loaded in. From in from a fire engine, the ADA facility will be built in twenty twenty two if funds are available. The plant facility will be the fourth upgraded facility among our eleven stations. Would be our second ADA facility. Firefighter network help is enhanced by showering at the station rather than.
You're okay with that? I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I mean, that might be something we could put an asterisk next to if we have to go back.
Right.
How conservative.
Okay.
See. Tracy's probably is really conservative and and wisely so when it comes to. You heard anything from Grant about what?
I haven't emailed into him, but he hasn't responded, um I haven't heard from him at all.
According to trustee, it won't be this week, she doesn't know.
Gotcha.
So.
So I'm gonna leave the room and then you guys do the downtime, okay? Um, if you don't mind, sure. And then we'll have a number.
So zero, is it zero there?
I'm totally good with that. I mean, I understand why he ran out and then I also don't understand. It's not any different than any other ones. Now, if if he had. If he had raised his request to fifty grand, he should have had ten times. Anyway.
Alright, so the five correct?
Put that in there.
Let me change this column to. Oh, that's. So that is that hundred and twenty seven. Say this.
Well, because of COVID money. We are gonna have a hard time balancing, but. It's gonna be about where we draw our funds from, if we leave the. County Road Fund alone. You know.
He has, this is based on, during the project base and the hundred and fifty thousand, it's actually less than what um we talked about, I just haven't had a chance to see.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I should have waited till, I should have waited till Pete came back in to make that comment, that is, that because of CARES Act money. I I don't see us having any trouble at all balancing this, but no, the question is where? Where we draw funds from. It's where we moving and, you know, with a going forward strategy.
Yeah.
Jackie and Tracy will be able to help us a lot with that.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking like, we can. Probably leave the County Road Fund alone, that's what I was saying. Basically. Not go after that, right?
Which ones do you want?
That always really bothered.
What did our expenditures come out to for the one percent?
But when we cut like.
Is this column here?
Twenty percent in two years, yeah.
Oh, hold.
You know, like, we stopped by a paper clip, it was ridiculous, it was, it was.
The community purchase is one hundred sixty two thousand two hundred, you know, I think I can make this bigger. That might be easier. So there you go.
Okay. And so I guess the contingency of those people we sent back to the rec board. But if they don't get it from the rec board, should we leave that thirty thousand in there for them, or what is your thoughts on that, or?
What about like the people, like say, you know, that come in the middle of the year, like your project graduation that's not budgeted and and stuff?
Yeah.
Do you want uncommitted?
Prior to community partners, yeah. From that fiscal year, it created a bunch of kind of like. Those community partners.
Okay.
An emergency.
Okay.
I mean, certainly would be with my item, I don't, we, oh, the desert of the year, I don't think all of them. Right above memory. Hi, it's like the third from the bottom.
Oh, right here.
Should we, should we put an amount in there and so that it is, and then we can allocate it from there, if that's what we want? So should we put thirty thousand in there, because that's the difference between thirty thousand, seven eighty two? We'll make that.
Exactly, well.
Thirty thousand.
Seven eighty two, that'll make you as to what was requested, and that way you don't have to do anything else if everybody comes back.
So when we fold this into the big picture with the general fund. We took, we got all those presentations, but we haven't gone through them.
Correct, you need to give us direction on. Those um. Additional.
I wonder how we go. If we ran it with. You know, Jackie makes little asterisks and something, right? If we ran it without any of those, it's much nicer to build a budget than to make them by cutting. So if we funded it, if we started with all the basic needs and then. Went department by department. You know, because you were asking him to prioritize so that we would know where we would need to.
Yeah.
Maybe not funds of it.
I know what we've done, so this column here is we've been everything studied. And then this is all the additional respects and we're not that much more at all.
Oh, yeah, we're, so you pull an hour, yeah.
And so that, I mean, the two big, right, are sheriff and the attorney. And a lot of that attorney is sixty thousand that was already being spent, this wasn't being budgeted for. And so I don't know how you, either lower the intern program or you just fund it.
And then this is your cheap labor.
Yeah, and then the sheriff's budget is that. Coming markets. For the entry level. Where in this budget do you have the CARES Act reimbursements?
Right, so if we. That estimated cash, if I plug that in as it stands right now without him. Moving or anybody's moving to salaries or anything like that, it was. It was a four point four million, I'm just gonna.
Okay.
That leaves two million. After the yellow column.
Yep.
But if you added in the four hundred and fifty five, that would maybe went one and a half million.
Yeah, one point.
But many of those changes. Would have to be sustainable as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
And of course, as always, I'm very conservative on my cash on hand estimated, so we could end up with more.
And then it's the only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is then so we're creating company shorts.
Does.
This is a whole compote's.
Does that enter into the position that Jackie asked for?
Yes.
Is it in there?
It's in her.
This is, this is further up.
I'm not a part of, yeah, that's right.
So there's only really one, two new positions.
There's for the grants mine.
Yeah.
Three.
Right. I suspect that France would be a half time position, I'm guessing. I'm guessing we're gonna probably, if this commission thinks about it, I know the city is very interested and. I would be interested to start out that way.
We can share somebody to spend.
Yeah.
Well, when you share somebody, their knowledge increases more because they have more exposure.
Well, they do slip more grants, they do federal grants, they do, you know, the same basic grants, and so it becomes a. Really easy place to get a whole bunch of grants put out because you just cut and paste.
If that was your thing, do you want that broader scope as a as a means of personal development or growth?
Well, and then you think, what kind of person are you gonna get for thirty thousand versus what type of person are you gonna get for sixty thousand? Are you gonna get an entry level versus a professional? So.
When you can't get bored, if you're bored at one, you just go to the other one.
Right.
I keep it lively.
Yeah, the the interesting part will be the how to split the benefits, how would that work, but but that could be never.
Well, if the city charges an admin, the, you know, the allowable admin, you know, years ago, the commission just. Put at the bill for grants, so the more grants you got, the more labor you were having to take care of and. Ty Wright says, hey, wait a second, why aren't we charging, you know, an administration fee? Because it made it. Made it harder and harder to go get grants when you. When it increased the load on the commission from the grant of favor its administration too.
Yeah.
So since we've done that, that that helps out a lot with that. Salaries and benefits thing, because if you're charging an administrative fee. You know, I don't know if they have thirty grants over there and we have ten over here, it could be. Seventy five, twenty five or something. Or maybe it has to do more with how the fees coming.
I would think you'd wanna do it like it's time spent.
Yeah.
Because there might be not be a grant related in in the sense of, you have to be the research, the writing, the the.
Oh, I was just thinking about. The administrative fees that come back and and what they're getting paid above them going back, right? So think, if they're getting some administrative fees. On the city side and some on this side, that makes their position partially funded. I mean, we're funding it out of the general general fund, but the administration fees go into the general.
I think. I'm here how this with the benefits, they, I mean, it easily be done through a time sheet.
Yeah, yeah.
And for Rita.
I think it's totally figured, you figured out, that's what I'm pretty sure. My one question, if you have four point four, so we're committing essentially to four hundred twenty five thousand dollars every year more. Um, with this, essentially, because Jackie's position is probably not gonna go away, the sheriff's probably not gonna undo what's done, your position. Not the position at your office, I didn't mean to say your position. Grant's position probably not going away, so those are kind of, that's two hundred, one hundred and four, thirty six, thirty one, and thirty seven. So that's four hundred thousand dollars, twenty five, four point five, take it or leave it. So that's what we have to say is, is that something that we feel is a sustainable thing? Knowing that we have one point five million. Overage that all said and done this year, so that would cover that for three years. What would we do going forward is the question, and is that something that everybody feels comfortable with?
Sure.
I think it's a question of probably our main, our main goal, we know we start being. And we went from a bunch of expenses of twenty, about twenty one thousand dollars. And then eighteen, nineteen, we went to ninety thousand dollars. And then uh in nineteen twenty, we went to uh. We went to ninety five thousand dollars. And now in twenty twenty one, we would spend it already a hundred and eleven thousand, but still want payroll to go. And so, you know.
Oh, you're talking about the attorneys on it.
Yeah, and the other. I mean, you know, is there consideration for a cap, you prior return, but is that just enough money? Because this has become, because we spent this problem over the years, and not to say that the need is not there, but I don't wanna say. But I think that we need to, I I would suggest that we need to have a finite number in here, because otherwise. You know, there, it'll be out of control.
Right.
Or they could get out.
Yes.
Or they could get out.
Well, it's pretty interesting that somebody would just overspend their budget, you know, with that. You know, that's a.
I shouldn't that interns fall also into our salary and pay grade range where that would put that crap, maybe? I know, I don't think so.
That's a good suggestion.
Because maybe that's how we deal with that crap.
Well, the question is, how much are the interns being paid in terms of it being an hour?
I believe so.
And do, does this. Uh, program produces our employees in the office schedule? Do they move from being injured to be hired there?
I suppose lots of people go for internship, you know, not necessarily wanting a job or that. So the question is, it's twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour for a legal attorney. Good investment, and that would depend on how they manage.
Yeah, and how many of them are.
How how good of leadership and. Lighting everybody out they do. You know.
Change, change of leadership right now.
It's worth a discussion.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I mean, like, I don't want to pull a number out of the air arbitrarily. You don't wanna take away something that somebody built a program around. You know, if it's cranking, if it's not cranking, maybe it could be modified. Oh, in the summer, well, that may is. It's funky because it's. Little people who are staying for the summer program. And that. And that. The only thing that's interesting is that. The way they dealt with cases before they did that. In some cases, they.
But it's like a lot of.
Critically saying that it's not a goal that this war should be. Should, it's that I just don't think it's covered yet.
Yeah.
I would choose to. To see if we still have the fall that we're in.
Well, it makes you wonder if Kurt will go in there and be like. You know, just weed the garden a little bit, clean up, sweep the shop now, you know, clean it up and. It becomes an eighty five thousand dollar or seventy five thousand dollar a year thing.
Amanda, how many attorneys are in the attorney's office, you know?
So I think when they're five, they're full staffed, and they give the states. reimbursed, you know, whatever portion that they pay.
So I guess I don't know exactly what the interns doing, if they're illegal or. Because in the private world that I'm familiar with, if you want attorney, one paralegal at the most. Often times one attorney to or one paralegal to a attorney. Um. And so if we're doing two interns per attorney, that's, and I, I think you just do a physician or physician or. Say, hey, Kurt, make the case for why you should have one attorney for one intern and cap it that way. But.
I could see spending more money on paralegals and, you know, researchers in. Civil, private civil cases rather than. Criminal, lots of criminals are pretty dumb and the evidence is pretty clear and it's pretty open shot. You know what I mean? Like, I don't think that you have to do the same level of research. To do criminal prosecutions as you do in the in the civil world, so. I agree with Pete, I don't understand it.
Maybe Kurt could help us out, I think Kurt just wanted to make the budget look like it was supposed to be. But maybe he has an idea of why there were so many interns, maybe that's us that you need to have or whatever. Because then that makes sense if it's ten thousand and you need ten, that's a hundred thousand, but. You know, I think you probably should understand if it did the tough economic, probably won't be getting ten interns. You know, because that would probably be the first place I would go to that.
You know, if you ever, well, so I guess another question is, like, if you're a restaurant, you send out. Two hundred and fifty W twos at the end of the year, even though your ongoing staff is fifty people, right? It's like you have a five hundred percent turnover in a year, because that's just how that business is, right? So internships could be like that, if somebody. Visit their last semester of college and they're in there for four months and then they move away and go get a job or, you know, whatever, so. So we could send out a whole bunch of W twos. It would be interesting to know, like, how many man hours are worked in a week? But but when you do twen- twenty two thousand in a month. At fifteen bucks an hour, that's a damn lot of hours.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
I'd like to knock it, Kurt, you know, I don't, that is probably like lunch right now, but what do you guys think? Just to justify that amount or say, hey, this can go to a hundred and fifty, this has to stay closer to. Yeah, I just don't have the insight, I feel like I'm flying, but it seems like a lot of people, what it seems like.
Well, when you start speaking about the expense that has not.
Yeah.
If you put too many people working in the same place, productivity goes down. But there's. You know, too much traffic, too much distraction, too much banter. Right.
Yeah, I I'm not sure that I could point to research other than one time that this board had it done. That that I could point to interns, and so it's a lot of this there. Yeah, I don't know what happened, but it would be nice to know what they would do. Other than that question, what other questions do you think we need to to answer on this thing, other than contingencies? And.
Yeah, and I just asked crazy, I was just thinking about the, you know, the areas that we. Not come to a decision. Are you going to consider anything in regards to salaries? Are you going to add more money into the IT structure, appreciation fund? Are you going to increase the building? Fund and the emergency reserve? These are just thoughts in my mind that we could not.
Well, the employee sort of funding. The way it was before, there was no sort of escrow account for people to get. Raises, right? So if you're way up there in the corner. And your boss wants to give you a raise, it's basically a decision that gets made here. And so when we made the step in grade, you know. The job classification and a range for each job. You can predict the liability that the commission would have without micromanaging the decisions that get made. At that level, somebody might be at the bottom level, you know, bottom third of the pay in in that job classification and. Their supervisor, their boss can. Can deal with that, you know, if they get more responsibility or perform better, you know, become more valuable, they can deal with that in within that. Pay range, so if if we were to look at it in it. You know, if we were to. Do the math as though everyone was paid the top in their job classification, then we would know the the maximum. Liability, you know, that we have, the maximum exposure. You know. That's possible, right? For the current. Classifications that people are in, and probably if we can't. We can't meet that, we should. Set aside enough money there that we can meet that.
Yeah. So we put in two hundred and fifty thousand two years ago, if I remember correctly. And and we didn't give raises, or I can't remember if we gave raises and then we put two fifty, and then last year, we put in. Two hundred and fifty, and we half of that went to the reserve and then half of that went to raises, that how? Some.
I think it was two hundred, two hundred and then two hundred, and then we used ninety one thousand.
For raises.
Yeah. But in this current year, is that right?
So I suppose. Like, I would never wanna micromanage somebody's decisions within their departments, but. If raises happen, they happen. Like, as a cost of living thing, you know, where we just bump the whole stepping grade up. By two percent or whatever. To me, that's an appropriate decision. For commissioners to make, you know, is. Just across the board, does the whole scale shift by a percent and a half or two or something, right? Whatever it should be. Well, it's right, it's just not possible to. To go down the list and do that. So but if we have, you know, if we have money, thought it was sustainable, we. We could do that for our people.
So we got a million and a half, is that right? So what if we did what we did last year, is it same ninety one thousand out? Would that be said, or would it probably be more, right?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't think. They they are their own entity, so we make the appointments, they have their own tax ID, their own funding sources, all of that stuff. But they've come, they've come to the past, the airport. Well, so you said obligations and requirements, I mean, basically, so I, maybe, maybe they come to us. Needing something, but that doesn't mean that we're required to fund it, right?
Right. I just.
What's what is, what if they traditionally had, it seems, a thousand, fifty thousand? How would you guys? It seems where we're sitting, in my mind, it would probably be a hundred thousand, maybe more, I guess. How would you like to budget that? I think it would make sense to budget that.
The thought that I have is that, um. Because I talked to Amy and. Because there was not very good record keeping and issues with um. Contracts and revenue collection. She intends to. To bootstrap her own self with, you know, to get her to lay of the land and figure out what's what and, you know. Not embark on any big projects, the only thing that I think they might have hanging over their heads is. Any change orders that could be left over from the construction of the airport terminal, but I don't know if there are any and if there are how much.
Are there any financial fines? That will be seen.
We wouldn't see them, they would. Yeah.
I know they got a bunch of parizac funding, I don't know what the stipulation to that parizac money is, I wanna say it's. Million eight, but but I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know if they could go for salaries. I don't know what the stipulation of that is. But I think there's gonna be some charges that will be this year that we wouldn't expect every year, hopefully. Makes of accounting. It's a lot of accounting, we're gonna, but I don't know if that could come out of their parizac money. What would you guys think of this, where's that for me, not you?
Well, if they came to us, I don't know that I wanna set any aside, but if it's sitting in. Miscellaneous uncommitted, you know, like. Then it's there, I mean, you know, basically. The reason that we. Took all the little bit of extra space out of everyone's budget is so that when somebody comes in with their air on fire, we can. Deal with that. So it's worked really well, and maybe they'll come and maybe they'll go. But somebody.
Yeah, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful we could do it that way, if you guys feel like that's the best way to budget, if that is fine with me, I. Okay, do we have a airport?
Then there's no placeholder, they have to come see us.
Yeah.
Well, that's one time, right? So we don't create a a legacy liability. It depends on what we do in about. Thirty five days. Because this this budget can be totally sustainable or nip and tuck for the next. Bunch of years.
So what would you propose? Because that that could be one time, right? Funding that is during the COVID, so would you think it would be? I don't know, a hundred bucks a month for every employee for twelve months, twelve hundred times employees, or. I'm just showing that number out there, I don't know what that number would be.
I I keep going back to like, you know, all the employees that worked. For the months that they worked that COVID, you know, so what April, March last year.
Yeah.
Going forward, but if they didn't start till November, they wouldn't get paid those obviously. That's why my mind keeps going, my mind says five hundred because. And part of it is because we averaged out what public health was making with their nine hundred and then a hundred and fifty. Over those fourteen months, I think they were getting that, it became five hundred and twenty five a month. I am not set on that number, that's just for my mind.
Would you know what, but you don't know what that number is right now?
No.
And that would be a Christina question.
Yeah, or Amanda, Amanda could figure it out. But yeah, I mean, you gave us the direction to go with that, we would know, obviously, then. For employee, and you know, like if you said a hundred bucks a month for each month or whatever, you could easily calculate that. And because it would have different tax.
Different.
On it because it. Different tax rate, no retirement. From this right stipend. A stipend would be taxed differently for the employee taxes. No, no retirement, okay.
Yeah, and so Amanda, what is kind of a ballpark number of of people that can be employees? It's a hundred and forty five, so if there were six thousand. And so did some of those groups get parizacs?
I think the only.
Like the first responders, did there wasn't this?
We got reimbursed for them, but I don't think the deputies got a dime for doing anything.
Right, there's so hazard pay.
Yeah, but.
Okay. Okay, so so if we did six thousand, just ballpark it in my mind times hundred, you know, six. Yeah, I guess if everybody was here all year, so if you times that by seventy five percent. So if they were here nine months, you're in the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar range.
So maybe my. I don't know how many employees.
In my mind, you should, um, because you have less exposure essentially, and then. You know, twenty five hundred bucks over a year seems to be a. Thank great, but ain't that either? And what would, what would that be? That would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something. Ballpark, I mean.
That would be a remarkably. As we have like a hundred and fifty employees.
And I really don't wanna send a message, people are not less important than public health, but we didn't really have any control over that public health.
You're talking about the state employees.
Yeah, yeah, and then the people. In direct contact, somewhere less in direct contact, others somewhere in less direct contact than most of you, quite honestly. Cause I live next door, but, um. Well, we didn't have any control over that, that was federal stuff, going to the state. What's your thought about? A number like that? I mean, employee wise. Would that be just? I don't wanna cause problems to you guys, but.
We're gonna be appreciative of anything because. I can't speak for anybody else's offices, but when you have your staff in your office, at least one of you crying because of how some customer treated them. It's a problem, I mean, and the way to just thank them for being here, I mean.
Well, so there's the compensation part, but there's the acknowledgement part, the gesture. That says, we saw what happened. We, we have this funding available to us and we are going to use it this way.
Yeah.
You're a job well done.
Yeah. Sometimes people, we. The financial side as. I'm doing a good job, thank you. I mean, you can say that all day long, but until it hits a checkbook, I don't think it really impacts them as much. That makes sense.
Yeah. So. A month. For a full-time employee. And then pro-rated for hard-time employees, and then we'd get a number from Amanda at some point. It would probably be closer to. Three hundred thousand would be. Three fifty, I'm guessing, I think Jackie did it for full-time for everybody, but I don't know what that is.
What about?
Yeah, so, no, yeah, so Amanda, for months served, prorated, so Amanda, so for the months served between March and. March, or what, what would you guys think? Or March to June?
It was March, well, it was spring break, basically.
So April to June to run the fiscal year plus a little bit before. Um, and then if we needed to do it again next year. Twenty twenty-one. How many months and then? Yep, and then. Times two hundred bucks a month. Full-time, yeah. So if, if it's half-time, it'd be a hundred bucks a month, or just for, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and the good thing about that is it's not based on pay. Yeah, it means that the cook in the detention center. It's a. It's a. A relatively higher. Thing than it is for an elective official, so, and I like that.
But that doesn't come out of this budget, right, this would, that would be ARPA funds. Right, okay, so this budget, we need. I would like to talk to Kurt about the need for interns.
And get the record. Things sorted out.
Yeah, well, we've got that held, um, so we could go forward with that until. And let the rec board do what they're gonna do, and even if they didn't do anything, either I do put thirty thousand.
Right, it would still be there.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Um, and then decide, I mean, which we wanna put into the contingency fees. And I'd also like this to continue to put money into the salary reserve so that you have a corpus at some point, you don't have to end up doing that anymore.
Right.
And so in lieu of.
Well, and the sheriff's thing would go into the salary reserve, so it's. If you set one up specifically for the sheriff. That gets weird, it's better for it to just all go into the same pool.
Yeah.
And for. Them to make decisions about their pay scale to be competitive, right?
Yeah.
We've had some heartburn dealing with some. Stuff like a chiller will break, sure, and, um. It's funny, Campbell County is like two hundred million.
They're gonna be.
We are looking at a few hundred thousand here, a few hundred thousand there, if you added it all up, it's probably. Five million or something.
I wonder why they didn't fund that, uh, mental health crisis center that the county, she said no, they don't it, and so closed down. Campbell County.
I don't know, I, I think they have a hard time saying no. The Democrats here would never spend the kind of money that the Tea Party Republicans spend up there.
Yeah.
Once, when you have that, when you're sitting on that kind of money and somebody comes in and says. My road's not wide enough and the culvert's not big enough and the water pools up and washes across and we need a fire station over here. What are you gonna do, say no, we need to sit on two hundred million dollars?
Well, they did it to that, uh, to that, uh, mental health center.
Yeah, it's a weird thing to do. Because, because some investments. Pay off in spades, right? And. You know, do you wanna pay Title twenty-five bills, or do you wanna? Head that off a little bit and. Help people.
Yeah.
Keep their houses and keep their jobs and keep their cars and keep their kids, rather than just. Blow up to nothing and have to be peeled off the street, you know?
Yeah.
And it, and that's kind of what you're faced with. You don't. A person doesn't have access to help early. Without, without stigma and.
Yeah. So on the salary reserve, it looks like we have three oh eight, is that actual right now? And so then we would have the sheriff's hundred and seven, is that what he had, that would be almost recurring? And then essentially, hopefully a hundred or.
For you, you mean?
Yeah. And then we'd like to give raises to other county employees, and so I'm just trying to figure out what a number. That would be reasonable to get to.
Year one is twenty-seven here and seventy-nine there.
Thirty-sixteen or seventeen.
No, you're fine. Just goes up each year. The max of ninety-five. Well, so the max is about three minutes up.
So if you put a. Quarter of a million dollars into the salary reserve. We'd only be using a hundred and seven of it to the.
So we would be building.
Forty-three would be able to get. And then. That would make us some room, two fifty, yeah. And I just started that number. There, so.
Putting any of this into the, the, I mean.
You were saying two fifty for salary reserve and.
Yeah.
And she put it in emergency.
Yeah.
You could leave that there, maybe we'll just change it later.
No, good catch.
And you said, what, what was the question, though?
Because this number. Includes the shortfall.
Uh-huh.
With this number and then the revenues, it does not include this, did.
Please include that, yeah.
Include that?
Uh, it seems to make sense to me, I, I, I kind of thought it was gonna be in there. Oh, no, it wouldn't be in there, cause you didn't know if you're gonna prove it or not.
Yeah, that's what. And if you said you were, and I missed it, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're right, I, I was just. Okay.
Okay, so that's where.
And does that put everything from community partners balance, direct aid balance into that? One point five seven three, is that?
I don't have any money transfers. None of that six seventy-nine or the ninety-six going into the general fund.
Okay.
You want me to add those?
Is that what we normally do?
That's what we have done in the past, we've identified specific like post-aid fuel. Those things to be able to isolate and prove that we did not. Use direct aid for salaries, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so. However, we do it normally, we do it that way.
Right, we may not be able to eat all that up, I mean, we had to just. Scrape from every couch cushion, we put a budget together and the COVID money. Is. CARES Act one was changing. It's interesting. When it comes to property tax, schools get, the schools get seventy percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifty-fourty or something. Yeah, wait, fifteen or.
It's, I don't know, three, four years, but I think the base will probably be five. But I want to put that. Probably at five thousand. Yeah, something that is only about. Seventeen thousand. But was there additional fee because of, uh? Yeah. So now I need something about twenty thousand, maybe just.
Can we, can we just?
Uh, maybe just do the difference.
Difference being into the IT infrastructure account, if you do, do that, then you go to whatever you want.
This is bizarre for me. We had.
It's an awesome kind of bizarre, I don't wanna, I've had to be where you are.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it has a lot to do with. The fiscal discipline that has to be there. Yeah, the, the lack of assessment. So, um. I guess is. When you have. If you can have more. You know, it could be easy to just run around. Buy pickups, you know, take home cars or whatever goofiness that they do. I mean, like you go to buy now, man, their golden bridge shop is better than the whiteout shops, right? You go to ours and it's like a World War Two quads. You know? So, so, um. I don't. When you add positions. Um, it, it requires more management, right? Like my philosophy is to. Pay people more who are super productive.
Right.
Just use a symbol.
So, okay, so that's two-three without the two fifty out, and then the overhead start fall below two zero seven nine, that's with the two fifty out. Okay, just wanna understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, what has been a. A standard emergency reserve transfer, have we had a standard or have we just kind of winged it as the?
Originally kept it at the five hundred thousand, but then, as you can see on this, it's now this. But we've also been expanding out of there for outside investigations and other things.
Yeah, so you think, you feel comfortable with five hundred thousand, do you think that you'd hire?
As a transfer going in, can you?
Yeah.
Good, right?
Yeah. So leave it at five hundred thousand or leave it with nothing? Okay, okay.
So what's the balance in emergency reserves, general reserves and contingency? Oh, I see, down here, yeah, um. And remind us the, the purposes of those accounts, like. When we would access them, cause they're, it's set aside with, with different thresholds to go after, right?
So the general reserve is a catastrophic event type, such a situation where we need to cash right away. Uh, we'd have to have some kind of emergency action taken. Emergency reserve is where we have taken. Outside investigations, you know, for the.
Things that blow up that are in the budget.
Right. And then the contingency is just money that has been set aside, um, out of leftover money from direct data hardship. Last year we did something with one percent or the move fund or something, we moved it. Into the general. A legal term. We didn't have it. And, you know, it's built up to five hundred thousand dollars, which you could use for other purposes and. It's something that. We need to.
So general reserve is the most restricted. Contingency is the second most, because if it's made up from hardship. And over the cap of direct distribution, that's. Well, two of those are the same thing. Anyway, they, they can't be used for personnel, so, so if you pay out of contingency, it can't be for. Personnel expenses, right?
Um, and perhaps we wanna add a line in there for the building reserve too, I.
Yeah, of course. And then. Are you thinking that the IT? Infrastructure or whatever we call that account?
We can do additional, I did include that just to zero out direct aid over there.
Okay.
But, I mean, if you wanted to go over and above that nineteen thousand to.
I don't.
More seed money, that's, you know, for you guys.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna make it too difficult, but to have too many special funds, but. I don't know.
The IT is a good special fund, cause it's the source for. Yeah, you know.
Have two hundred and eighty-two funds that, all of them together, both five thousand five hundred and twenty-three accounts, that's. Everything that Amanda and. Well, mostly Amanda types in all of them, but some of them are the fiduciary accounts for that school district agencies, but the millions, but.
Would you rather leave the IT fund under the direct aid? Or would you rather that be? A pullout from the direct aid and then have its own fund down below? Okay.
And what's one more fund when you got two hundred and eighty-two? It's more than one.
Well, it's it's not going to impact my life, so I I I want to defer to those lines and really back.
The IT fund is basically like contingency. And there's no predicting what a future commission would do. When you think that this style would continue. So whether. It's it's somewhat unwise to make a whole bunch of different little. Lots of money because it makes it harder to think about how to go after. I mean, like. The IT, you know. Fund could actually just be in contingency, but. But be tracks separately or as a subcategory in contingency.
Your thoughts on that?
Is that too weird? You see where I'm trying to go? Maybe it's too weird, I don't know.
So here's the quirky thing that um about contingency. Um, the thing about contingency is a good portion of it is invested.
Oh, so it's not liquid?
Right, I mean, there's some that is in our general account and. And it's basically that that cash flows is on the reimbursement base. So like we pay out all the with expenses. We have to have money in the account to cover all that. That's, there is a piece of it in there, but.
What percentage of the contingency fund? When you guess is.
It's probably.
Invested versus liquid.
More heavy on the general side, so there's two million in the general account and then. One point five invested right now.
Gotcha, so that's like sixty forty-ish.
Yeah.
Forty percent vested, sixty percent.
So we have to balance the budget, right? We can't carry uh a surplus or can we carry a surplus?
We can have a surplus.
Okay.
I'm not a surplus of expenditures.
Right, right.
So we do, we can say this is what we're doing, we're just not gonna allocate.
Right.
I never thought we'd get to this place. I like, I like it. It shows fiscal discipline. The point is. You don't have to spend all the money that's taken in. You only have to provide the services that the county government is supposed to provide, right? So, so we are too scotch with public funds to fund those things. Those things just belong. You know, applying somewhere else. And and then some things like an animal. You know, place just probably isn't really a function that the county government should do, right? We should do prosecutions and put. Uniforms on law enforcement, body cameras, you know, the stuff that that's the. The guts of. You know, all the other, all the other statutory duties and all the departments.
So a quick, you guys might not be able to answer, this might be a one for Kurt. Let's say the. Ramirez cases, case settles or we lose. And we have two million in surplus. That's probably a pretty easy place to go, but if those funds are committed other places, then that would be. A difficult place to go. I'm not asserting that we would or we wouldn't, but. I'm not sure. And so doesn't make sense to put like five hundred thousand in salary reserve account. And that way, if we lose and all that money goes away, at least we have our salaries covered for a little bit longer. I don't know, and I don't know.
It's a good point. I don't remember where the insurance coverage stops. There's, you know, if you.
Jackie wrote us, or not Jackie, but Peggy wrote us somewhere.
I re- I re- I mean, I remember that we have it, but I'm checking over it.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it's public information, but. But if, but if it went beyond, you know, if an award went beyond that, then we have to with cash. Then it might not matter if it's, if it doesn't need.
So.
Well, direct distribution could very well go away. I mean, they basically said, get ready. They put us on notice, get ready.
Let me make that a little bit.
So one and a half million. It's the limit. So we have one point five as our exposure. That's how I read that. That's our co-pay. Does have complete insurance coverage for all the claims in any award or the policy of it. And any word of the policy of one point five. Federal claims would be the financial responsibility, so everything above one point five. If it's a federal claim. Okay. So would you guys do any? So we have two million dollars and probably more because I I think you put tilt tilt in there under a million. Haven't you? You put tilt under a million, it's like nine.
It, I have it in there for next fiscal year at one point. I'll just bring up the words. This is from the WCCA revenue estimating.
Okay. So that's in there already?
Yeah.
Okay. So what would you guys recommend with that two million and some change? Paid it in cash or?
Oh, I think it would be totally fine to go down to about three or four hundred thousand. Put it away places.
I would probably outside of the emergency reserve. Start filling some of those and then the balance to the salary reserve. Because, and this is my own personal freedom, not anybody else. There's a lot of the money that why we have cash on hand is because of the CARES Act and because of the deputy reimbursement. Which is a a personnel salary driven expenditure that we bore, that we got money benefited from. Why not put it aside? Then that is the fully funded, pretty much, hopefully, I mean, depending on. For our employees.
Well, people need certainty, right?
Yeah, and our people are our biggest asset. I mean, we don't do anything without peoples.
So you say, so I'm taking from that seven hundred and fifty thousand to the transfer to the reserve, seller reserve. That'll get us down the road a few years for sure.
Christina, have fun looking at this budget.
And then what's the next level of importance, do you think?
Um, the building reserve to me is not a bad idea because. We constantly seem to be having things break. Our two thousand and one, or two thousand, whenever the remodel was done, two thousand and five, we were back in the building. It's just part of the lifespan of Tiller's.
Yeah.
Um, office for me sir.
So we're twenty. We're eighteen years in and that means that. The maintenance costs are gonna go up.
Yeah. So.
That'd be totally fine, but.
Could you go down just a little bit so we could see those account totals? So there's nothing in the building reserve?
Um, oh, I'm sorry, I mean, it is got this balance, let me copy this.
Okay.
See, I think that needs to be. Seven or eight hundred thousand somewhere. I think it needs. Four hundred more out of there. And then maybe we don't have to spend with God willing and the crypto.
Can you, is it easy to transfer out once it's transferred in? To something else, or does it always have to?
Be just an amendment, just like we did for.
We have that discretion, okay, right? The only limitations, the only two funds right there that are limited is contingency because it can't be used for personnel in general. Because it's like. You have to smash the big bag to get to the money.
Catastrophic, courthouse burned down.
Right, okay.
But even the salary reserve, we could treat it like the fence treats social security. No rate.
So, so you just, you could put four hundred thousand in the building reserve.
It would be a pretend.
Yeah, and maybe, and maybe that salary reserve, I'm just gonna make a case for a million bucks.
I'm fine with it, whatever happens is is good.
Yeah. Because if we can get it out of there, why not put it in there? The cell's not wide enough, or is it?
Okay, these are gonna be a new balance.
And of the general, the contingency, it seems like the contingency is more restrictive than the general.
Well, general is gonna be a, like a, probably an active buck kind of situation.
Can we do a resolution to transfer money out of those two things, just like?
Don't, no.
No.
Contingency in general are pretty restricted. Emergency reserve, we can go get.
Okay.
The same as we could the building reserve or the seller.
I think contingency could be, but you just can't.
Do you have any ideas? Mercy, I guess, would be the next one that you would want to fund. Half a million, I don't know. This is a nice problem to have, I'm telling you.
Well, if we were Campbell County, we had two hundred million, this would be like, well, we don't even have any money to put away.
Yeah.
It all depends on your perspective. We only have a half million bucks left, what is this? We're in trouble. The sky is falling, we're gonna all die.
Do you feel comfortable with those contingency in those general reserve account totals? Or do you believe that a couple hundred thousand here and there would not hurt? I don't want to lock up a whole bunch of money in places that give point zero two five right interest. When we might be able to do it someplace else where you could invest it.
Right, well, and there's not been a lot of great investments out there right now. Most of them are CDs and we've got the fairly short term results that.
Then you could turn over in Southern Bay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But um. It, I guess, it can't hurt to have the cash on hand in the general account.
Well, right, so it's pretty balanced if you look at the general fund having eight, eight hundred and thirty thousand.
Would you feel comfortable with? Two to four hundred thousand of cash on hand or as a overage, or do you think that's too much?
No, I. I think that's a good number because I know my four point four million is super conservative too.
Yeah.
And if tilt comes in, there's another like six hundred and seventy thousand.
Are you saying this is without tilt?
This is without tilt. This is figuring it at the lower rate, because you can never count on them. So. I have figured it conservative in the property tax of a conservative three percent increase. He's expressed. A digit that is about four percent higher than that.
Yeah.
But I'm not, without talking to him, I don't really wanna.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so if you like, let's say you took six hundred out of that overage, left two twenty-nine, seven forty-six, seventy-seven. If you took out six hundred, would you put four hundred in general, two hundred in contingency? Or would you even balance it even more towards general?
Probably I would go fifty fifty.
Okay, so three hundred and three hundred? How about, let's, let's do that and then you guys can tell me what they would like to do.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. It's bizarre. It just, I don't even know what to do with myself. I mean, I seriously wouldn't be laying people off. I, I was, couldn't sleep at night. It was just sick. My heart was sick.
This, I mean, I think this year, this, it is easy this year because we have these additional funds, but going forward.
Yeah. So, and then my guess would be if the pill comes in higher than we think, we should direct most of that towards salaries. And that way we get closer to. Fully funding our obligation for more years. Or having the opportunity to fund our obligation for more years.
You have the little spreadsheet up and now I can't remember what it said at the ten year mark, how much we have to set aside.
Or.
To not have an unfunded liability, you know, an unfunded obligation. Yeah, this little.
So the sheriff should be eight seventy-seven. Is that total all in for ten years? Sheriff, is that?
Say that again, I can't hear you.
With that ten year, with your proposed changes, would it be eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars?
That's not that central. Here, so, this, yep, so you got both. This is for detention and that's for patrol. But that's what Sheriff Appleman was talking about, was combining them both.
Okay.
But I did it separately before because we were separate.
Okay, so it's one point seven with benefits total.
So, no, so you have to add that to the pension.
Okay, so it's two point five, two point six.
That's a good place to put, to to set things aside.
And if Sue and Keever, you think more in the salary reserve? I'm just winging it, right? I'm just winging it, right?
Anything else ought to go in there. As much as we can scrape together ought to go into the salary reserve account.
So you think emergency reserve could, every, every one of those could use a haircut of a hundred thousand?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, leaving the way it is, but all, everything else that removes. It's, it's hard for us because it's somewhat arbitrary, right? We don't have our hands on the lever of the day to day cash flow and spending like Jackie and Tracy do. So Tracy, you can't be noncommittal, you gotta help us out here.
What do you think about those numbers as they sit right now?
I, I guess in my thinking, because of what Daffy stated earlier about the emergency reserve, I would reduce emergency reserve. I, I don't know to what level.
So let's, let's say two hundred thousand out of that and put it in the salary reserve, so three hundred thousand.
Yeah, we developed an inflation problem in a couple of years. We were gonna have to keep up with inflation.
Our, our polar rates, I'm not sure, some of that inflation.
Sure, yeah.
So unless inflation starts to skyrocket at three to four percent per year.
You don't wanna go backwards, you know, in terms of purchasing.
Right, and by year five, you're eight percent behind. But if inflation stays, if it creeps up. One to two percent per year, that our salaries and stuff are what we budgeted for, basically. You, you guys will have to try and account that for everybody else.
Yeah. I just have concerns about how much money's been printed.
Well, I think the home sales have been outrageous.
Yeah.
And I think we're gonna probably at some point, the economy is gonna stray.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what, our neighbor's house sold, you know, over two and a half years, and we sold it for fifty percent more than the bottom. Fifty percent increase in two years.
We've had realtors offer so much money for our place.
Yeah.
It, and it's great.
Right.
So. So this is be, this would be the budget that you send out to the paper, right, that we would produce? And then if tilt came in larger than that.
And you can change the dollar amounts to the transfers the day of the public hearing and the adoption.
Okay, and then we could designate those funds somewhere else at that time too, okay?
And at that point, we'll have a real number from Grant about assessed valuation.
Yeah, and then that could be a potential increase as well.
Okay, so then, do you feel comfortable with where we are with the budget, right as we said?
What I'd like, is my, my, is my, is that. Maybe after next Tuesday, maybe we have a, we just review one more time. Because I just would really like to look at, make sure we can help for everything. I've reached out to the department, that's an estimate to review. I just, I would hate to have something that might be. We over, we over exactly.
Don't wanna commit an error of omission.
I, I would like a fifty seven thousand of the one. You know, I'm, there, there could be other things, I hope you're wrong, but I would rather to look at it one more time. Then it would allow us to prepare it for the newspaper and then we would all, we would all have updated figures. See exactly what we're on departmental wise, adding those changes here and go. For many, many, I mean, for probably twenty five years. We used to adopt it on the second Tuesday, that was the statutory, that was the last day. We started spending much and, you know, and yet we didn't adopt the new budget. So we worked hard to do everything that we need to do. And certainly, we will also know by June twenty three, when we put our, our cash on hand. There's a lot of factors to get to play into the planning of the first. Um, but I think the approach that we've taken now, that we, we work hard to earn and to do is to. Have this about, I think, will be starting with this too.
And Tracy and Jackie and everybody is, you know, please, but. If you see something that we're missing, like just talked about, but if there's a better way of doing some of this. Let us know, right? Because you guys, like Eber said, know much more about the day to day operations than I personally know. And so I wanna be, it's nice to have some extra to play with. And so if there's a better way to, to make that work, or the, how operations happen here. Then by all means, tell us how to make that work.
We just, I think it's just hard because we have so many different funds.
Right.
I mean, if, just imagine if we had to budget each grant fund on its own. We just blanket, you know, like fourteen million for grants and we had to do every single grant. That would be, you'd be here for literally months.
Well, you'd be doing the grants offices work over it.
Yeah.
And if it's something, I'm concerned about grants, I'll just be perfectly honest with you. And so if we had to get a contract, get everything up to speed. I don't wanna do that, but you don't wanna lose the grants, right? And so, you know, if there's a better way to think about that, then let me know. How about, and let us know how that would work, so.
I think it's came a, come a long way over the years, so it's, I started to, it's been streamlined intensely, but. Each year, I mean, try to be something a little bit different, a little better.
Awesome.
That's true.
Yeah. I think that's a discussion we probably ought to have. And what that might look like, you know, with, with, if it comes in, I, I, I don't know what you think about it, Eber. I feel that some of the things that we deal with on an emergency basis might not be an emergency if we had somebody here.
Sure.
Yeah.
It all depends on who it is.
Right, it always does.
Man, because of you.
Anyway. Yeah, I can go sideways on you, but.
Yeah.
It would be a nice point of contact for people to have. Work out that stuff that you didn't get worked out.
Sometimes I suppose the tennis match between the commissioners and whoever. Can be a little slow when the ball gets in our court just because of our daily lives and what we are and what we do. Somebody has that job. Well, and one good thing about that would, would be that it would take huge amount of pressure on Jackie. Jackie, in some ways, acts, fills that role. And it would be weird, because she's really used to it, but it would be like, you know. It would almost be like she would only have to be a county clerk and that's it. You know, rather than. And you know, then you have to plan for growth too, without spending too much money on the front end. Because Laramie's gonna grow. Nice place, people like it here, the whole county.
Anything before we, we call this thing, wrap it up?
The final review or a final review, I guess, not a wrap up, but a final review.
I don't see why not. I don't see why not, that seems like a real reasonable way.
Did we miss the American Rescue Plan discussion?
It was a really quick, and we only talked about premium pay for employees.
Premium pay for employees, yeah, what's that mean?
It's kinda like hazard pay for dealing with COVID forever. It means that people get compensated for all the masks they bought, plus some.
We, we had a standard amount, Sheriff, that we're gonna try to get our arms around. Per month, for a person, prorated for either full time or part time. From April of last year till June thirty of this year. Then, we don't have that amount right now, figured out, I'm just working on it. That's the only article we had. We have more article discussions to come.
Okay.
In the, in the coming months and years for sure. So is there, is there something that you would like to discuss further?
We didn't know how it's gonna be distributed. So, based on how we rent the bill. We didn't know if some of that was gonna be earmarked, if it's gonna be distributed out to each department. That's basically what we thought, but we discussed on schedule. Of how, how that was gonna be distributed, the plan as. And then where.
I don't feel very versed in that language to be able to say, hey, this first three and a half billion dollars. Five hundred thousand would go to the sheriff, you know, I just don't, because I know there's more basic tenants of it. Um, but I think we really haven't worked over the idea of what does infrastructure mean to us, right? And there's a bunch that can go into that in my mind, but it might not be shared with these guys' minds. So.
Is that a conversation?
Yeah, but I'm thinking it's a conversation for later.
But you guys will like what we do.
Did you guys, I, I, Rachel, I'm looking at your eyes and it seems like you're a little perplexed by that, that I comment I made to you.
I mean, we could just, I don't know why.
No, you're all right, okay.
Yeah, no.
Okay, if there was something else you guys would wanna talk about, that would be great, I mean, okay, okay, super.
We didn't know if, and discussed our decision that we made or what.
Just for the first part of the hazard pay, I guess, if you're gonna call it that, for the last year and three months or two months. Stipend, yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Right. And, and I gotta tell you, Aaron, just going forward, I don't particularly think we're done with COVID nineteen. Um, and so we might be doing this again next year.
Okay.
You know, at least a, a portion of it and, and other projects along. So.
Okay, all right. So you guys are gonna send, you guys want to.
Thanks for your guys' budget work. It is really helpful to know what we were getting into and. Have an idea of what that might overtake years. I, I don't think I've seen that before, have shared. Seen that last few years. Yes.
Chairman, would you like me to turn off the meeting now?
All right, thanks.
Do you wanna ask David to stop?
Thank you, sir.